Buenas, en half a day. The Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs has now called to order. The time is 2:03, and today is Tuesday, April 15, 2025. Thank you, everyone, joining us both in person and online for this public hearing on Bills 56, 78, and 94 COR. Bill 56 is introduced by Senator Therese Terlahey. It is an act relative to including podiatry under the Guam Board of Medical Examiners and to adopt rules and regulations and code of ethics for podiatry. Bill 78, introduced by Senator Shelley Calvo, is an act implement the Restaurant Meals Program, or RMP, under the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP. Bill 94, introduced by myself at the request of the Department of Administration, is an act to clarify selection of the government of Guam group health insurance contracts. Notice of this hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media on April 8, 2025, and again on April 13, 2025, thus meeting the requirements of the open government law. In addition, notice of this hearing was also posted on the Guam Legislature's website and the Guam Public Notice Portal. Materials for this hearing were shared in the committee drive and are available for print upon request. Recording of today's hearing will also be available online via Guam Legislature media on YouTube. I would like to acknowledge and recognize the committee members present here today: Health Vice Chair and Vice Speaker Senator Tony Ada; Majority Whip Shelley Calvo; Senator Sean Gumitatau; and Senator Therese Terlahey. Again, the purpose of today's hearing is to gather input, discuss the potential implications of these measures, and ensure transparency and accountability in our decision-making. As we proceed, I want to remind everyone that each senator will have five minutes to speak. The author of each bill, however, will be afforded 10 minutes to provide a summary of their legislation. I encourage all speakers to be concise and mindful of time so we can accommodate as many perspectives as possible. At this time, we will begin with remarks from the author of Bill 56, Senator Therese Terlahey. Senator?
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair. Half a day, everyone. So, Bill 56, this is part of work done by the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners over several years to update how the rules that are governing the healing arts practices and the professions, because those had pretty much been in place since 1998. And we did update, do a comprehensive update to the rules and regs in the 36th Guam Legislature and a few tweaks after that. And so this is one of them that would move the Guam, the podiatrists to be governed by the Guam Board of Medical Examiners instead of where they currently are, which is the Guam Allied Health, the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners. And this would be in line with some jurisdictions who put podiatrists under the medical examiner's board. There are some jurisdictions that have their own boards just for podiatrists. But this was a recommendation, again, by the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners. So the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners currently is composed of different allied health professionals to include acupuncture, Oriental medicine, audiology, chiropractic, clinical psychology, licensed professional counselor, mental health counselors, marriage and family therapists, clinical dieticians and nutritionists, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech-language pathology, respiratory therapy, veterinary medicine, and others. If this board, I mean, if the podiatrists are moved to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, the bill proposes that there will be one additional position on the Guam Board of Medical Examiners specifically for a podiatrist. And so that's pretty much the bill. And I thank you all who are here to testify. Sisus Massey, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Terlahey. We will now proceed with public testimony on Bill 56. If there's anybody who would like to provide testimony, please come to the table. We ask that you introduce yourself, speak closely into the microphone, and state what organization you are representing.
Buenas, en half a day. Guahu si quasi. Currently the CMO for GMA, and also a member of the Guam Medical Board of Examiners. I would like to give testimony on Bill 56 today as it reads an act relative to including podiatry under the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. Podiatrists are a specialty that treat difficulties and problems with the foot, both surgery and medical management of the foot, and also the leg as well. It requires a bachelor's degree, followed by four years of a doctorate in podiatric medicine, and then a residency. Because it is a surgical and a medical field, I do not believe it belongs under allied health. Allied health, as you mentioned, are typically things that align with medical services. And so I believe that podiatry should be under the Guam Medical Board of Examiners. In the States, podiatry is either under its own board or is under the medical board, except for Iowa, as I've learned, that Iowa is actually under the allied health. So there's only one state that has that situation where podiatry is under allied health. But for the most part, podiatry falls either under its own board or under the medical board in the States. So this aligns with standards of care. There are 33 podiatry boards within the United States that have their own boards, and then the rest of them, except Iowa, falls under the medical board. Because the current allied health board consists of one podiatrist and one PA, this is how they're able to deal with accusations and provide licenses. I also would like to encourage the body to consider moving PAs into the Guam Medical Board of Examiners, because, again, their training is aligned with doctors and surgeons. And so, I support this bill wholeheartedly, but I would like to encourage the legislature to move PAs. And I'm happy to be part of that author and body if there's any request to help with that. Again, same thing in the States, PAs fall under the medical board. The job of the GBME is to safeguard public health, safety, and welfare. It's an established board that seeks to license and discipline physicians within East State and Territory. This requires resources. Sometimes legal opinions and representations are required for proceedings and for denial of licenses. Investigations also sometimes are needed to conduct for accusations and allegations. And then training for the board members are also needed. For example, at the end of April, I'm going to the state medical board meeting to learn about how to administer licenses. I'm using my own funds to do that, and I'm just requesting that, in addition to increasing the license fees, the body considers appropriating some resources to help with this education and with the resources needed to help with us. Because sometimes we need lawyers to kind of help make decisions, especially difficult cases. So with that, I thank the body, and with the most deepest respect, I thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Naimi. Just to respond to what you are requesting, I actually have draft legislation to place physicians' assistance under the Guam Board of Medical Examiners.
Yes, thank you. Half a day. Senators Solis Matanani, Senator Terlahey, members of the Guam 38th Legislature and the Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs, doctors and members of the community. I was invited two days ago by Dr. Steve Kim to attend this hearing and submit testimony. Thank you for giving me the chance to give input on this bill. I think it is a positive step in having the GBME oversee podiatry, as we are defined by Medicare as physicians, and have been working as physicians and surgeons of the foot and ankle for over 75 years. The branch of podiatry was born out of the field of carapidi and then was branched off due to unique conditions and pathology of the foot and ankle, and given that we also have to walk on the foot and ankle, which is differentiating it from the hand. Chiro means hand, and podi means foot. So, podiatry branched off from carapidi many years ago, which was started in England. Over the years, diabetes has become one of the leading diseases that inflicts so many complications in our people of this island, the nation, and other countries. It is deemed a silent killer when the disease is left uncontrolled in our patients. Podiatry has remained strong as a field of medicine that has tackled so many foot and limb salvage procedures to prolong patients' lives and limbs. Lastly, it is state-dependent whether podiatrists are licensed by allied health boards, medical boards, or its own independent boards. Allied health boards, such as Iowa, license their podiatrist. When you have an abundant amount of podiatrists, such as Illinois, they have, they form and have their own licensing board, which makes sense. Guam remains underserved and has only a few podiatrists. It behooves us to continue our efforts for recruiting, credentialing, and vetting new podiatrists coming in. The GBME can help us with our efforts with this respect. We appreciate the last 30-plus years of having allied health board oversee the licensing of our podiatrists, with Dr. Kim currently serving as a board member for the allied health. I support Bill Number 56-38, and thank you for allowing me to give testimony. Sisus Massey.
Doctor, for record-keeping purposes, if you could please state your full name.
Sure. Sorry. Teresa D. Borja, and I'm with Marianas Foot Care Clinic and a consulting physician at GMH.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa?
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Sabrina Solis, members of the Guam Legislature. Regarding, I come here for public health and social services testimony in support of Bill 56-38. Thank you for this opportunity to provide input, introduced by Senator Therese Terlahey. On behalf of the Department of Public Health and Social Services and its Health Professional Licensing Office, we express our full support for the passage of this bill. This proposed legislation is critical to ensuring high-quality care and well-being for the people of our community. Currently, seven licensed podiatrists in Guam operate under the Guam Allied Health Examiners. Podiatry is a specialized and essential medical field focused on diagnosis, treatment, and management of conditions affecting the foot, ankle, lower leg, and lower leg. Podiatrists undergo extensive education and training that is on par with other medical professionals. Aligning podiatry under the Guam Board of Medical Examiners would formally recognize the importance of this medical specialty and ensure that podiatrists are regulated alongside other medical professionals in Guam. This transition would foster improved collaboration and communication between podiatrists and physicians, creating a more integrated approach to patient care, particularly for individuals with complex health conditions. In conclusion, Department of Public Health and Social Services, HPLO, strongly encourages the committee to favorably consider and pass Bill Number 56-38. This legislative measure is a critical step toward enhancing podiatry care in Guam, improving patient safety, and streamlining the regulatory framework for this vital medical field. It is essential, it's an essential move towards building a stronger, more cohesive healthcare system for our island. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ariola. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Senator Telo Tadegui. Dr. Kim?
Half a day. My name is Sangook Steve Kim. I'm a podiatrist. I work with Dr. Borja at Marianas Foot Care. I'm also a foot and ankle consultant for GMH Hospital as well. Thanks for introducing this bill, Bill 56-38. I've been working as also a board member for Guam Allied Health Examiners. You know, I learned, it's been only a couple months since I've been working with this board, but I learned the history of this position from Dr. Bella Haja, who's a chair for the Allied Health Examiners, who introduced that, you know, she, we always debate, hey, you should move to medical examiners, or you should stay. One thing she mentioned to me was that, hey, Dr. Kim, you know, make sure you get a voting seat when you go to medical examiners. You know, you're with allied health, you get to, you know, vote for what you want to say. When you go to medical examiners, make sure you get a voting seat. That's what she, you know, emphasized to me, being a young board member on the team. So, as Dr. Naimi mentioned, podiatry is under medical examiners board throughout the States, or either they only have their, they have their own podiatry board, or they're under their, or medical examiners. For us here on Guam, we only have seven podiatrists on the island. It's very difficult for us to form our own podiatry board. Hence, I think, you know, it's better to be under medical examiners. Therefore, I do support this bill, but I wish, you know, the same voting power as allied health, the podiatry has, which that continues with the medical examiners as well.
Thank you, Dr. Kim, and to the panel who provided testimony on Senator Terlahey's Bill 56. I will now open up for questioning from colleagues. I will begin with the author, Senator Terlahey.
Sisus Massey, and thank you again for your testimony, all of you, and the support of the bill. So, just to make it clear, so the findings of the bill do state the training required for podiatrists and kind of the rationale why they should be under the medical board, and they're performing surgeries as well, they're prescribing controlled substances, all of it. And it does move all the current rules that you've enacted for yourselves under the allied health, they're going to move those over, and the ethics conduct rules as well that we enacted not too long ago. And then it does, when it adds that one member to the board, it adds a member to the board and that it will be a podiatrist. So, so that voting power is still there. It's a different board, however, and smaller, not as big as the allied health board. We did ask the HPLO office to notify all the podiatrists, and they told us there were only seven, but they supposedly were all notified about the hearing and the bill so that they could look at it themselves. We also asked the Guam Medical Society and Guam Medical Association to notify their members. We want to make sure, I think you're members of that as well, but we just want to make sure there are no objections from any of the other side. That's one of the issues with the Physicians Assistance Bill that we tried to do with these both together last year, and there was some objection to that, so we're trying to work on that as well. So, I don't see any objection today, so that's great. So, on the medical board side, it makes perfect sense, and I'm very grateful for your work on Guam, and the very few of you that there are, I know that there's a lot of work, and I'm grateful for your work at the hospital as well. And I guess my only question would be, and I'll ask the director, would there be any problem, or will it be a smooth transition to move any pending disciplinary cases to the other board? I don't know if there are any at this time. There aren't any, that's great.
As far as, no.
So it should be a smooth transition by the HPLO office, and they're very competent, so I have no real concerns about that part. All right, Sisus Massey, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Terlahey. Vice Chair Senator Ada?
No questions.
Senator Calvo?
Buenas, en half a day, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this bill enhances, I believe that it enhances public health and professional oversight, and it's a good bill, it's a mindful bill, because this ensures podiatrists are held to the same standards, or high standards, as other medical professionals go through. In consideration of the framework and timeline to transfer active licenses, I just have one, kind of like one, two question. In consideration of the framework and timeline to transfer active licenses and integrating podiatrists into GMB operations, how will license records, applications, processes, and disciplinary cases series be transferred or reconciled? What is the proposed plan to transition podiatry licenses from GB, GBH, HE to GBME? That's my own penmanship, and I cannot read it.
Thank you, Senator Calvo. I'll answer that under, because it's an administrative process. So, what we'll do is, as soon as the bill is law, then we'll just transition and issue out new licenses.
It's pretty much a very simple
Seamless, it'll be seamless.
Process. Thank you for answering that.
If needed. I mean, they're currently, the license is intact, and if there is an eighth podiatrist that comes on Guam, then they'll be getting their license through the new board in which it falls under, but it'll just be seamless.
Thank you for clarifying that. I have no further question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Calvo. Senator Gumitatau?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and it's great to see 28% of the total podiatrists on Guam in one room at any given time, so thank you again for your attendance today. And believe it or not, I was like, okay, there's seven, so I just wanted to just put it out there. Just a little bit of a light note before my questions, just had, I only have two questions if I can, and maybe the doctors can help, and perhaps maybe even Therese. But with the bill as drafted, listing reasons for denial, suspension, or revocation of licensure, what are some examples of additional instances that should be added to the bill before it moves through the legislative process, including perhaps language covering maybe the following instances: prescribing, dispensing, or administering legally-controlled substances, or any dependency-inducing medication without legitimate medical justification, therefore in other than a legal or a legitimate manner, or employing solicitors, or subsidizing agencies, or paying, or presenting any person money, or anything of value for the purpose of securing patients? When we look at this measure, it's a little bit different, but also, would you guys, would you recommend any ads, if you will?
I could speak to part of that. It is a new requirement of all physicians holding DEA Drug Enforcement Agency license, federal and state. We are now required to go through eight hours of training to renew our DEA license. And through that, we learn the history of like drug abuse and substance disorders throughout the States and the nation, including the territories, and how the drugs got brought into our nation. So now we are trained to identify maybe drug-seeking behavior, stuff like that, and to know that there is help in the different agencies. We currently now have a DEA office on Guam, which will help greatly when we do encounter something like that. So in addition to that, we are also required to do, I think, four hours of ethics training, so that keeps the doctor informed on both of these topics, relating to even dealing with pharmaceutical companies, anything that might, or relatives, other people, that might influence your drug-prescribing practices. So by that, the federal and the state authorities have monitoring over any suspicious activity like that, so we are held to that as well.
Just to add on to what Dr. Borja has mentioned, that ethics course that required, is required by our, also for Guam Board of Allied Health, and also for medical examiners as well, that was something implemented, I believe, last renewal cycle for the medical license, including podiatry. So, you know, that's something that was added, and you know, a couple applicants that I reviewed for podiatry that had to be, you know, you know, the applicants had to be refreshed and renewed with these new ethics courses that they have to take and fulfill so they can resubmit their application. It happened a couple times during last application renewal. So, it's something that's strongly being implemented to all the doctors and that are applying to Guam. And in extent of, you know, Senator Calvo's question, the last renewal period was just last December, so, you know, all podiatry members, at least the license that they have is something that were renewed just starting this year. So, I think everyone is pretty much on the same page for that one.
All right, thank you, Dr. Kim.
If I may, the fees for the podiatry and the GBME are different. Reading through the bill, I didn't see what would happen to the fee schedule for podiatrists versus medical doctors. Do we carry over the fees from the allied health, or do we have new fees? If that was included in the bill, I think that would be helpful to clarify that. Also, training for the Guam Board of Medical Examiners on how to, I guess, provide licenses to podiatrists would be helpful. On the board, sometimes not all the board members are available, and so, for example, if the one podiatry member is not available, it falls on the rest of the board to decide whether or not this applicant gets a license. And so if we can have training on how to establish giving licenses to podiatrists, I think that would be, that would be helpful.
And thank you, and that sounds like a good idea in the markup for this bill, so thank you for your input. Madam Chair, I only have one more, only one more question. Recognizing that 10GCA Section 12203, with the Guam Medical Board of Medical Examiners, requires that all board members shall be citizens or permanent residents of the United States who have resided in Guam for at least five consecutive years, immediately preceding their appointment, can you please clarify, if you could, for the record, whether permanent residents must be a United States citizen if they wish to obtain a license to practice podiatry in the territory of Guam?
I do lack, you know, some, some knowledge about this, but as far as I know, just getting into medical school or podiatry school, you do have to have U.S. citizenship or a permanent residency to even to go into the school and to graduate. Same for the residency training, they do require U.S. citizenship or permanent residency. So, the five-year period, sorry, I'm not too sure, but yes, you do need to be U.S. citizens or permanent resident to become a practitioner physician on United States in general, so. But the length of five years, sorry, I'm not too sure.
And also, in addition to that, you, one of the requirements of GBME and Guam Board of Allied Health is that you complete a U.S. residency, depending on your specialty, for the uniform amount, like general surgery is five years consecutively, consecutive five years. So, in addition to U.S., being a U.S. resident and permanent resident, that is a requirement of both boards to be licensed here on Guam. So that's just another level of training that they ensure that our doctors have.
Yeah, and thank you for that, because, I mean, obviously, I mean, we're all watching the Conrad State 30 and Physician Access Reauthorization Act that's going through Congress right now, that is, again, looking at, you know, how do we manage international doctors who would have completed their residency training in the U.S. and how do they remain in America? So obviously, with the shortages, not just in Guam but across the country, that particular federal law has a lot of attention, and I just wanted to bring it up, especially as part of this particular hearing. But otherwise, Madam Chair, I don't have any other questions. Thank you so much for the opportunity, and thank you again for testifying today.
Thank you, Senator Gumitatau. Senator Tadegui?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon to my colleagues and those who are here testifying, and of course, those in the audience. Appreciate you coming today, taking the time out of your very Appreciate you coming today, taking the time out of your very, very busy schedule. You know, there's, there is a shortage of physicians, as well as other professionals in the industry, and I appreciate you being on Guam to take care of our people. So first and foremost, thank you so much for that. I do know that this was under the Board of Allied Health Examiners before, and now it's going to the Board of Medical Examiners. Can you tell me why it was put in allied health at the very beginning, and not into the Board of Medical Examiners? Sorry, I was kind of late, so if somebody already answered that question, I apologize, but can someone give me a reason for that? Why it was placed there instead of where it's going to now?
Yes. So since the first podiatrist here on Guam, I believe that was Dr. Hazen, some 28, 30 years ago. He came into the island when we had no podiatrists, and he fell in love with the island, and he wanted to stay. So at that time, the medical community was not fully aware of podiatry's scope of practice. They had very little experience with this, and mirroring, mirroring some of the other states, they decided it's best probably to start us out as an allied health member, because we, back in that, that time, we were also not viewed as physicians early on, until Medicare defined the podiatrist as a physician a decade or a couple decades ago. So it started out as allied health, and some of the other states do have allied health, some are changing. Iowa has licensure of podiatrists under the allied health. Not too many are left under the allied health. Guam was the only other one that I knew that we were under allied health. So this moving to GBME was thought of about 10 years ago with discussions with Dr. Balajaja and some of the medical community. There may be still some medical physicians that are not in support of this, but for our purposes, especially those who are later in their career, as I had expressed with the discussion with Senator Terlahi, for me personally, it doesn't matter, because the, the rules and the licensing process is just as stringent as it is through the medical board. So for me personally, it didn't matter where I remained. I'm kind of later in my career, but for some of the newer ones, I think it behooves Guam to have this under GBME, so that you have a, like you said, a collaborative effort to license new podiatrists coming in, because some of us have been here for a long time, and some of the new rules and regulations can be, you know, kind of implemented probably more strongly with GBME.
Well, thank you so much for that history about that, and knowing that Guam was not the only one that placed it in allied health, there's still some other states out there doing the same. It was, another question I had, actually, it was touched on by, I'm sorry, I don't know your doctor.
Quazin.
Quazin? Okay. You brought up, because one of my questions had to do, now that you're moving over to medical, the medical board side instead of allied health, the cost, will the podiatrists have to, not have to, but do you see yourself raising fees because of the move going from one allied health to now the medical board of examiners, which is more stringent? And so do you see the cost going up in your, in your line of work?
I can answer this for you, Senator Titegui. From my understanding, even within Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, podiatry application fee was never raised. I think three years ago or so, Guam Board of Allied Health, overall, they raised their application fee, three or two years ago, I may be wrong, but, but podiatry was never raised, because they were thinking that podiatry may transition in, under Guam Board of Medical Examiners. So they left podiatry application fee as is, or membership fee as is, since then. So, and then, as you know, there was absence of a podiatry board member for Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners as well, so that kind of led to now where I think podiatry has the lowest application fee, even within the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners. So yes, you know, it is expected, I believe, to, once we move under, transition under Guam Medical Examiners, it should be, we'll have the same fee, please.
You'll have the same fee?
We'll have to have, we'll have, sorry, we'll have to have same fee.
So you, you don't see an increase being under this board, then? So you're saying no?
No, we'll have to have, sorry, we'll have to have the same fee as the Guam Board of Medical Examiners' application fee.
Okay, which will be more?
More, yes.
Yes, substantially more?
So I think the last time fees were raised for GBME was between five and 10 years ago. Currently is $400 for a new application, and $200 for a renewal. For podiatry, it's $250 for a new application, and $80 for renewal. We need to generate funds in order to do our job. We need to hire lawyers, we need to hire investigators, that costs money. Right now, there are cases that we haven't decided on, because we don't have legal representation, and it's delaying the process. So we are talking about increasing our fees, which hasn't done a long time. Because the work we do is very time-consuming and requires staff, we also have to raise the cost of podiatrists, because they are now part of the family. So I foresee that being something that happens.
As in the allied health board, there is a position for podiatry to be sitting on that board. When you go to medical examiner's side, of course, it's, most of it's appointed by the governor, those who are sitting on the board. And there's a lot of controversy that's going on right now at the Board of Medical Examiners, you know, suits that have been brought up, that for the last 30 years, nobody has, you know, been tried for anything or convicted, yet there are people out there in the community who have countless times have called for neglect or medical malpractice for some of these physicians. You're under a lot of scrutiny now, you know, being under this particular board, and I don't know what kind of contributions you have to this board, other than, you know, following the rules and guidelines, but I hope you, don't turn a blind eye. I hope that you're able to contribute to this board, that now you're going to be a member of, because I think this bill is going to pass, that you can incorporate some of the, your insight on how to make this board better, because everybody knows this board is really under, well, they haven't been doing a whole lot of addressing when it comes to medical malpractice. So it's something I think you, you should really look into as well. But I appreciate you being here and your honesty, and good luck into this new board. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Titegui. As for myself, I don't have any questions for, for you, but I do support Bill 56 and hope to be a co-sponsor, be added as a co-sponsor on this legislation. And as I mentioned, Dr. Niyami, I am introducing a bill regarding physicians' assistance and moving it under the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. And to address a point by Senator Titegui, I do plan on holding an informational, possibly even an oversight hearing, into the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. So thank you, Senator, for, for bringing that up. Senator Titegui, you may close.
Terlahi, Senator Terlahi.
Sisus Masih. Thank you again, doctors, for your testimony, and Director, for your testimony. And just want to encourage you, yeah, when you are on the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, that really, I think what the public's crying for is just that the cases that are brought before them are adjudicated or discussed and treated quickly. And I know, Dr. Niyami, you're talking about fees, and I want to remind everyone, we've had several oversight hearings over the years, even during COVID, we had to have some regarding the licensing boards, their complaint about not having lawyers, so that was all clarified. And it's your duty to raise your fees, when you need to raise your fees, in order to afford what the boards need to afford, if they need to afford different licensing procedures, different training, different lawyers. They were supposed to work it out with the AEG, but when that doesn't work, we've given them full authority to hire lawyers at the HPLO office, they were sharing before, and you can hire your own if you can afford it. But that's all a matter of fees. So particularly, the medical licensing board, we've gone through that, and that they should be raising their fees if they need to. The allied health board did, and some of the others, so, and I think that's what we expect, is that you're going to be willing to do that and able to do that. I know it's your physician peers that might object, but still, that's really what you've got to do to, to protect the people of Guam, right? That's, that's the job of these boards. And so I want to recognize a critical role that podiatrists play on Guam in diagnosing, treating, performing surgeries on foot and ankle conditions, aligning their regulation with other physician-level professionals, very much so. And I think the questions about whether it's going to be stringent, more stringent, I don't think so. You've got, you have already had to go through all that training, and you've got to, we've adopted ethical rules for all the boards, again, by legislation, so there, these are the national standards that all these boards now must follow, or these professions follow. And the, the same thing with the examinations, and I'm sure those are all standardized for your professions. And the goal is to equalize the regulation of podiatrists with the regulation of other physicians, because of the role that you're playing, because of the crisis we're having on Guam with these, with the need for podiatrists. We've got one of the higher rates of diseases that affect our limbs, diabetes especially. So I really appreciate your work, and your work in prevention as well, and that hopefully, all together, we can continue to do this. So we, I was looking at, at the current law in regards to their licensing of graduates of foreign medical schools, that there are strict rules about it, but it's allowed with other rules, and it says they follow the immigration and naturalization standards or rules that they've set up as well. And for the others, they're following the different national standards as well. So I'm very confident in the work that you do, and I'm very grateful that work that you have done on the allied health board, because that's a huge board, so they've had to do a lot of work. So I very much appreciate you, Dr. Kim, for serving on that board, Dr. Niyami, for, you're the GMH rep now on the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, so by statute, the GMH rep is, I mean, the GMH Chief Medical Officer is a member of that board. So Sisus Masih, and Director, for your assurance of a smooth transition, I know that's one of the concerns. So very much, I'm, I'm assuming the fees are going to be transitioned over, and it's completely up to the medical board to decide whether to raise it or not with your input. So again, thank you again to your, for your testimony, and thank you again, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Terlahi. We hope to have Bill 56 on the next session agenda and passed swiftly. We will now be proceeding with public testimony on Bill 78, introduced by Senator Shelley Calvo. Again, this is an act, Implement the Restaurant Meals Program, or RMP, under the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP. At this time, I ask those of you who have signed up to testify, please take a seat at Senator Calvo, you have 10 minutes to provide your opening remarks on your bill.
Sisus Masih, Madam Chair. Thank you, everyone. Hello, half a day. Half a day and good afternoon, everyone. I am so happy to see that the whole panel is, is full. I need one more, please, over there. Thank you all for being here today, and for taking the time to participate in this truly important public hearing. I want to extend my gratitude to our committee chair, Senator Martinani, for graciously scheduling this public hearing, and to the representatives of agencies and community organizations, and individuals, everyday members of our community who have joined us. Your presence and perspectives are invaluable as we discuss Bill Number 7838, the Meals for at-Risk Households Act of 2025. I also like to thank my colleagues that are here with me today. Thank you for, for showing up. This bill is designed to address a critical issue that affects many of our neighbors here in Guam: food insecurity. Food insecurity is defined as the lack of consistent access to enough food for an active, healthy life. It is not just about hunger, it's about the uncertainty of where the next meal will come from, and the stress that accompanies it. For vulnerable populations like the elderly, living with disabilities, and those experiencing homelessness, food insecurity have, can have devastating effects or consequences. When food insecurity goes unaddressed, the negative outcomes ripple across physical, mental, and social well-being. Physically, it can lead to malnutrition, chronic diseases such as diabetes and hypertension, and weakened immune systems. Mentally, it contributes to anxiety and depression, and the stress of making impossible choices, like whether to pay for food or other essentials like rent or medication. Socially, it exacerbates inequality and limits opportunities for individuals to thrive within communities. The Meals for at-Risk Household Act proposes the implementation of the Restaurant Meals Program, or RMP, under the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP. This program would allow eligible individuals to use their SNAP benefits at participating restaurants to purchase prepared meals at concession cost. To ensure the program is implemented effectively, the bill directs the Department of Public Health and Social Services, DPHSS, to adopt the program in accordance with federal SNAP regulations. This ensures compliance with national standards while tailoring the program to meet Guam's unique needs. Additionally, the bill tasks DPHSS with developing the application and selection processes for restaurants interested in participating in the RMP. This includes establishing criteria to ensure participating restaurants can provide affordable, nutritious, and accessible meals to eligible individuals. By involving local businesses, the program not only addresses food insecurity, but also supports Guam economy. Currently, the Restaurant Meals Program is being implemented in nine states: Arizona, California, Illinois, Maryland, Massachusetts, Michigan, New York, Rhode Island, and Virginia. California, for example, has expanded its program to include the 58 counties, demonstrating the potential for widespread impact. Across the nation, over 3,000 restaurants are participating in the RMP, providing a vital service to those who need it most. I introduce this bill because I believe that no one in our community should go hungry, especially those who are most at risk. Food insecurity is not just about hunger, it's about health, dignity, and ability to live a full, meaningful life. By expanding access to prepared meals, we can reduce the burden on families, improve nutrition, and support the well-being of our community. This initiative is modeled after successful programs in the states, and I am confident that I, that it can make a significant difference here on Guam and our community. However, the success of this legislation depends on collaboration and input from all of you. That's why today's hearing is so important. Your insights, experiences, and diverse perspectives will help ensure that this bill is not only effective, but also reflective of the needs and values of our island. As we move forward, let us remember that the lawmaking process and the shared responsibility, it is through dialogue, debate, and collaboration that we create policies that truly matter, that that truly serve our people. I'm deeply grateful for your engagement and commitment to this effort, and thank you again for being here and for contributing to the vital conversation. Together, we can take meaningful steps in action to address food insecurity and build a stronger, more compassionate Guam. Sisus Maasi, and thank you.
Thank you, Senator Calvo. We will now begin with public testimony on Bill 78. We'll begin to my right. If you could please speak into the microphone, state your name and title.
Good afternoon, senators. My name is Carol Hinkel Sanchez. I'm the Managing Attorney at the Civil Law Center, which is the civil division of the Public Defender Service Corporation. Our office actually represents the exact individuals that's identified in this particular bill. Our office represents the most vulnerable in our community, which includes our elders, the disabled, at-risk veterans for homelessness, as well as victims of violence, which is family violence, sexual abuse, and stalking. And we also represent the indigent community of Guam. And with that said, that's the reason why I'm here, because I'm advocating in the interest of these individuals that are vulnerable to our community that can't be here today to testify. And I feel that this particular bill is an opportunity for our office to advocate for their, on their behalf, because we deal with them every day. Our office, in fact, was really busy this afternoon, and I kind of just luckily had two attorneys on board that was able to cover. But I'm here today because, you know, I want to thank, of course, Senators Shelley Calvo for introducing Bill 7838, and the senators here today for allowing us the opportunity to testify on behalf of this bill and support it. I want to first clarify, because I did read some of the opinions put in the media and posts with respect to this bill. So I just want to say what's important for the listening viewers, or anyone that's listening to this public hearing, is that there's many misunderstandings as to what it is. And I'm not going to go over every misunderstanding, but I think the key thing to remember is that this particular bill is designed for a very specific population and for a very specific reason. The populations that are mentioned in here are individuals that either can't cook on their own, they can't buy food and store it because they don't have the proper equipment at their home facilities, or they don't even have a home. They don't have the ability to store food, cook food, prepare food, for whatever reason or whatever circumstance. That is this population that we're talking about. And very clearly, because like, as I mentioned, I read through some of the media stuff, I just wanted to make sure that the public is aware that this bill isn't meant or designed for every person receiving SNAP. It's very limited in what it is for, and it's meant to, as Senator Calvo mentioned, the food insecurities that exist in not just our community, but the community across the entire United States, really. It's been an issue. And not only will it allow individuals, these individuals who are vulnerable to access food and be able to access food that they can actually eat, it also stimulates the economy and the small businesses that will be identified as restaurants, because not every restaurant is going to opt into this particular bill, because it requires things. There's requirements that need to be met. It's regulated through, it's a federal statute. I also want to point out that this isn't just a bill that Senator Calvo just made up. This bill stems from what was enacted in 1964, is the Food Stamps Act of 1964, which is now what covers our SNAP program, which is our Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. It was amended later by the Agricultural Act of 2014, and that's what created what is called Restaurants Meals Program. But back in 1964, it already existed. There was already opportunities. The difference is, the federal law, because of the restrictions and the guidelines and the requirements, they allowed the states to opt into this program if the states felt that, you know, they wanted to utilize this particular program to serve as this particular community. And so that's pretty much like a very brief history of it, but it's a program that existed. It's a program that you've heard her say nine states have enacted. There are two other inactive states that are still working towards implementation. Colorado now has put a bill before their legislatures trying to implement this particular program, because when COVID hit, a lot of things closed, a lot of businesses got affected, a lot of restaurants got affected. Restaurants we love are not open anymore. And so this will stimulate the growth of that as well. But it will also allow individuals, again, the main, the key thing to this, is allow these vulnerable populations, our elders especially, our elders, our disabled who can't cook, who have caretaker, who is probably their spouse, and this bill only covers the spouse. So it's very limited, right? It's going to be the, either the elder and their spouse, or the disabled and their spouse. It doesn't cover everybody. It only allows them to use their SNAP benefits to pay for themselves and their spouse. So it's a limited, you know, I just want to make sure that there's no misunderstanding in the community that this is going to apply to everybody, because that was one of the big issues I think I saw. And with clarity, hopefully, people understand that the intentions of this bill is worth it. It's meant for a good reason, and it's not a program that is new. So I mean, it's been, it's been in effect since 1977. So on behalf of Civil Law Center, we basically support this bill. We hope that the senators will consider the support of this bill as well. It impacts the greatest of our communities, the ones that we care about the most, which is our elders, our disabled, the homeless. And, you know, hopefully, that this bill can pass quickly and get implemented, because I know that public health is going to have, you know, that's where the work is going to be done, is going to be through public health, identifying restaurants that will meet their criteria and the requirements, and also, you know, identifying whether, and it's a process. They still have to apply to the USDA FNS, which is our Food and Nutritional Service. So there's a process that happens, and there are qualifications and criteria that need to be met. And it's not just something, it's going to happen, and then every restaurant is going to benefit. It doesn't work that way. So we support this bill on behalf of our clients, our consumers, and we believe that it's in their best interest.
Good afternoon, and Sisus Maasi, Honorable Members of the Legislature, for, one, introducing this bill, and then also having us here today to provide testimony. My name is Samantha Titanow, and I am here to provide testimony on behalf of the Guam Homeless Coalition. We are in strong support of Bill Number 78-38, known as the Meals for at-Risk Households Act of 2025, which seeks to implement the Restaurant Meals Program as an optional component of the SNAP program that is eligible for Guam residents. So as a coalition of nonprofit organizations, public agencies, and faith-based groups working collectively to prevent and end homelessness on Guam, our mission is guided by the values of compassion, dignity, collaboration, and systems change. We believe that every person, regardless of their housing status, deserves access to basic human needs, which includes safe, nutritious, and readily accessible meals. This bill has the potential to remove a really critical barrier experienced by many of the people that we served, both those who are experiencing homelessness and, as many people know, that can also include our elderly and those who have disabilities. So the inability to prepare, store, or cook food, even when SNAP benefits are available, as I said, a lot of our clients experience barriers when trying to utilize their SNAP benefits to their fullest extent. Carol also mentioned, you know, the lack of being able to refrigerate or maybe even to cook. Also, we do recognize that our elderly individuals and those living with disabilities often experience those similar barriers. So the proposed Restaurant Meals Program directly addresses this gap in service by allowing those very specific SNAP recipients who are either homeless, elderly, or disabled to purchase low-cost prepared meals at participating restaurants. The program empowers them with dignity, choice, and improved food security. Additionally, this program would stimulate local economic activity by involving community restaurants, particularly if implementation includes outreach to small and family-owned eateries across the island. We also recognize, though, the importance of grounding this decision in data. Many of our clients rely on SNAP benefits as a lifeline. According to the Guam Homeless Coalition's, our Guam Continuum of Care Homeless Management Information System, which is used by all of the different service providers that are part of the coalition around the island to track kind of data. In 2024, there were 251 individuals, which came out to 199 households that were experiencing homelessness in Guam and are receiving SNAP assistance. And so thinking about the 199 households, that's about half of the households that we recorded during the 2024 pick count. So these benefits are vital to their survival, but without access to cooking or refrigeration facilities, many are unable to fully use them. This makes the implementation of the RMP not only timely, but essential to equity and access in our social safety net. In closing, we commend Senator Shelley Calvo for introducing this thoughtful legislation and urge the legislature to support this bill. Bill Number 78-38 honors the dignity of Guam's most vulnerable residents and provides a meaningful pathway to food security for those who need it most. We look forward to working with the department and the legislature to ensure the program is successfully implemented and truly serves the people of Guam. Thank you all again so much for your time and commitment to the health and well-being of our island community.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairperson Sabrina Salas-Mattonani, members of the committee, and especially Senator Shelley Calvo for introducing this important piece of legislation. Last term, you know, we testified on a bill that lifted the SNAP ban for felons. And as you, you know, I'm the Director of Public Defender Service Corporation. Our clients are people charged with crimes, and they, you know, when they do their time and they get punished when they're released, oftentimes, that bill dealt with people who were not given the tools needed to succeed, right, after they're released from jail. And so this bill also targets another large group of our population, and these are the homeless individuals. We represent many individuals charged with crime who are homeless. And if you see all the homeless encampments, you see the people who are panhandling, right, and they're out there asking for money for food, right? This bill would address it, right? It incentivizes participation in the SNAP program, and it also allows them, you know, a dignified way of really, I think, contributing back to our economy, right? I know that Sam mentioned that there were maybe 250, how?
199 households.
199 households, right? And I think that might incorporate, that's just the people who are registered now. I think there are many more. I know one count, there were like 1,200, right, homeless people that were registered or counted. And so even if, like, say, 1,000 of those individuals, right, registered or signed up for SNAP, at $400 a month, that would generate over $4.5 million worth of revenue for our restaurants, our mom-and-pop stores, you know, and also like some of these stores that sell prepared foods. So this really benefits our clients. It also gives them a way of participating in society by supporting local businesses, and it also helps, you know, local businesses. I mean, out of the, pretty much every subway in California is a member, participates in the program in California. So you can eat healthy at a low price with your SNAP card in California. And so we really want to thank the senators for addressing this bill at this time. I mean, I know that you have very many other important measures, but this is one that really can affect a large segment of our population, right? I mean, our entire island receives free lunch, right, because we're considered a disadvantaged community as a whole. So you can imagine how many people will benefit from this, especially our homeless and our senior citizens or my uncle, who could now go out to eat together, hopefully at King's or some other restaurant, but also our disabled and homeless as well. I'm not going to read the rest of my testimony, but I just want to thank you, and I really hope that you guys support this, because it really will benefit, you know, our clients. It will reduce crime, it'll encourage, you know, access to food, and hopefully reduce panhandling. You know, I was suggesting that instead of like ticketing panhandlers, that they sign them up for SNAP instead. And I think that would be a long-term solution to dealing with panhandling on our streets, bringing safety back to our island. Thank you.
If you could state your name for the record.
I'm sorry, Stephen Hattori. I'm the current Executive Director for the Public Defender Service Corporation.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Brice Salas-Mattonani, honorable senators, all those present here today and those watching online. Good afternoon. My name is Ruel Drilon, and I am the Support Services Administrator for the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities, DISID. I am honored to be here this afternoon to provide insight on Bill Number 78-38, relative to implementing the Restaurant Meals Program, RMP, an option for eligible clients under the Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, SNAP. I begin by saying that any program that helps to narrow the gap of accessibility to health, nutrition, safety, education, and family supports, especially to those who experience economic limitations or restrictions, is fundamentally a good program. The RMP is one such program. As defined by the United States Department of Agriculture, the RMP is an option that allows certain SNAP clients, specifically the elderly 60 years of age and older, persons with disabilities, the homeless and a spouse of ineligible SNAP client, to extend their benefits for use at participating restaurants to purchase prepared meals, indeed, a program worthy of consideration for the target population it seeks to serve. Like all new and well-intentioned programs, however, it is necessary to ensure that the time and effort put into implementation is well-spent, that is, that all considerations are thoroughly reviewed and vetted to address the objective of the program today and its sustainability in the future. Today, I would like to share some of those considerations. A study that was conducted by Roberts in 2020 from Occidental College Urban and Environmental Policy sought to evaluate the impact of California's RMP, specifically in the county of Los Angeles, in which an RMP had been in place since 2005. Some key findings to consider as we look to implementation of an RMP for our community include, number one, restaurant types. The referenced research showed a disproportionately large number of national chain fast-food restaurants, such as Jack-in-the-Box, Pizza Hut, and Kentucky Fried Chicken, as participating. These amount to approximately 86% of total participating restaurants. From the perspective of, quote, "nutritional meals," these restaurants are often seen as falling short of providing healthy food options, that is, foods typically lower in sodium, fat, and added sugars. With the limited number of local restaurants obtaining fast food is the quickest and most accessible, even to those with limited to no transportation. Number two, misunderstanding by participating restaurants and SNAP clients on how exactly the RMP is designed to work. The study suggests that many restaurants are not allowing certain purchases because of the uncertainty of what is and what is not allowed, often resulting in wrongful denial of purchases. Number three, accessibility and equal treatment. The study further suggests that challenges exist around accessibility to dine-in, particularly for persons with disabilities. Restaurants must account for adequate space to accommodate wheeled devices, for example. Additionally, the stigma around low-income eating at fast-food restaurants is furthered by restaurants labeling of, quote, "EBT Accepted Here," affixed to doors or windows. This often causes outrage in the general public that the government supports such programs. Lastly, while the RMP tends to favor onsite ordering of food with dine-in or takeout options, consideration must be made to those eligible yet are unable to leave home and with no stable support. Online ordering and delivery may be suitable options to consider. Lastly, the research furthers discusses issues around the lack of data collection and program evaluation, areas which I am sure may pose an obstacle for us as well in the absence of a formidable monitoring system. So now, how can we take these key learnings from this research and apply to the RMP as proposed? First, best efforts must be made to balance the number and type of participating restaurants, focusing on meals or menu items that can offer the most balanced and nutritional option. With such diversity of cultures on our island, choices are plentiful. The key is in providing the right incentives to encourage The key is in providing the right incentives to encourage participation and sustainability. Second, best efforts must be made to educate participants, restaurants, and clients alike, on the specifics of the RMP. This includes, where applicable, limits on the number of meals that can be purchased per day, limits on the amounts that can be spent, and who are authorized to make such purchases. Third, be intentional on communicating the details of the RMP so as to be careful not to widen any gaps or further any barriers, allowing for the integration of customers' dining, for example, as opposed to segregating the EBT-eligible clients, such as the homeless, from the general public. Lastly, create a mechanism that would allow for effective collection of data to monitor program effectiveness. Such data can help to improve and expand the program, potentially triggering the development of similar programs to address SNAP clients who may not meet the specific requirement of the RMP but who still have the need for nutritional meals. In closing, I reiterate that any program that helps to narrow the gap of accessibility to health, nutrition, safety, education, and family supports, especially to those who experience economic limitations or restrictions, is a fundamentally good program. Prudence in design and implementation make good programs great and lasting ones. So I thank you, Senator Calvo, for introducing this incredible legislation, and thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share my thoughts and my support for this bill. Thank you very much, and Happy Easter to all of you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Sabrina Salas-Montanani, Chairwoman of the Health Committee, Senators of the 38th Guam Legislature, Senator Calvo, author of the bill. Thank you so much. For allowing me, Teresa Ariola, the Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services, to provide testimony on Bill 78-38, known as the Restaurant Meals Program. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today regarding the proposed expansion of the Restaurant Meals Program, or RMP, within the Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, or SNAP, that we know it as in Guam. The RMP is a vital initiative designed to empower our most vulnerable SNAP participants by enabling them to purchase hot, prepared meals from designated restaurants using their SNAP benefits. The Department of Public Health and Social Services is in support of Bill 38-78. DPHSS is dedicated to supporting the people of Guam in achieving self-sufficiency in health and social welfare. Our vision is to empower individuals to lead dignified, healthy lives in a safe environment. Through the introduction of Bill 78-38, the expansion of SNAP to include RMP aligns directly with this mission by removing barriers that prevent many of our most vulnerable residents from accessing nutritional meals. With regards to program background and rationale, currently SNAP benefits are restricted to foods intended for home preparation and consumption. As a result, many nutritious and readily available meal options, such as rotisserie chicken, hot soups, and pre-cooked pizzas, remain inaccessible to individuals who lack the ability or resource to prepare meals due to physical limitations or unstable housing conditions. The RMP offers a state option that allows specific SNAP recipients to purchase hot, prepared meals at participating restaurants. Eligible participants must have an active EBT card flagged with a "RMP use" and a secure PIN issued by the Issuance Section within the Division of Public Welfare and the Bureau of Economic Security. This minor, yet very impactful, policy adjustment would provide an essential lifeline to those from whom home meal preparation is simply not feasible. The key benefits of RMP: The expansion of RMP would offer several significant advantages, including increased access to nutritious meals, enabling SNAP participants to consume hot, prepared meals when home cooking is not an option; enhancing food security, which expands food access for vulnerable populations, ensuring that they have readily reliable meal options; and economic stimulus, provides direct economic benefits to local businesses by increasing revenue for participating restaurants. National perspective and local opportunity: As of February 7, nine states, Arizona, California, Illinois, Maryland, Massachusetts, Michigan, New York, Rhode Island, and Virginia have successfully implemented the RMP. These states provide valuable insights into the program's benefits and challenges. The Department of Public Health and Social Services, through the Division of Public Welfare and the Bureau of Economic Security, has carefully reviewed these models as we consider a similar initiative for Guam. The eligibility and local impact: To comply with federal policy guidelines, the RMP is available only in states that offer the program. An eligibility is limited, limited to SNAP-certified households, in which all members must meet one of the following criterias: Elderly, who are individuals 60 years of age or older; the disabled, individuals receiving disability or blindness payments or disability retirement benefits due to a permanent disability; the homeless, individuals lacking permanent housing for meal preparation; their spouse of an eligible SNAP client, which I just mentioned above, who are partners or clients who qualify under the above categories mentioned. Our local data indicate that within Guam's current SNAP benefit-receiving population for FY '25 thus far, elderly only, 3,352; elderly only with spouse, 1,275; disabled only, 401; disabled only with spouse, 33; homeless only, 311; homeless only with spouse, 26. These figures highlight the significant potential impact of the RMP expansion, as a substantial portion of our community could benefit from improving access to meals. Regarding sustainability and implementation considerations mentioned by this fine gentleman to my left, while we strongly support expanding the RMP, we must ensure its long-term sustainability and effectiveness, effective implementation. Several key factors must we address. Senators, I also want to interject here that these recommendations come very highly from FNS, who oversee the SNAP program. When Bill 78 was first announced, one of the first things that me and my team have done is call for a meeting with FNS to specifically hear from them, what truly does this, the restaurant program in the SNAP space, really, what does it mean and what does it take? So some of those considerations are financial considerations. Currently, financing for this program, they have made very clear, is locally funded. They will not give our program, the Guam SNAP program, any additional federal dollars to stand up this program. So local government funding is where we need to fund this, with no federal assistance. This could potentially cost the government of Guam an estimated $400,000 for the first year. The EBT system modification: Our EBT card vendor, FIS, will need to reprogram the existing EBT cards or issue RMP-specific cards to those eligible populations, which would require additional resources. The implementation fee alone with our EBT vendor is about $70,000, plus a monthly operational cost of anywhere from $2,500 to $30,000 annually, depending on the number of cards. Administrative oversight: Increased staffing and administrative support would be necessary to ensure compliance, monitor implementation, prevent misuse, and of course, education. Application processing delays: Restaurants interested in participating must submit a paper application via mail, as online or email submissions are not permitted at this moment with FNS for the restaurant program. So snail mail must be used. The approval process can take over six months, according to FNS. Again, FNS is the only approving body of participants, restaurant participants. So the local program doesn't have jurisdiction, it has to go directly to FNS for approval. And of course, something that this current administration, federal administration, is very key upon and that we take very seriously at the department, is eliminating fraud, waste, and abuse. And so, program misuse risk, there is a concern that benefits could be used on less nutritious meal options, potentially undermining the program's nutritional goals. Some of the things I want to emphasize is, again, grocers, it's not listed, grocers who sell cooked foods, which is a wonderful option, we have many supermarkets throughout the island that have a hot food section. They need to, just so everybody's aware, according to FNS, need to apply separately from their separate application of being a SNAP participant as a grocer. So, you know, a grocer who does sell hot food and sell grocery would have two SNAP applications, even though it comes from FNS directly. The timeline to implement this, I highly encourage that the committee recognize that it's going to take quite a bit of time. And so I believe, I think the bill calls for six to nine months. FNS clearly states 12 to 16 months minimum to implement. Again, that is education, that is getting out there and rallying the support of participating restaurants who want to apply, then getting them to apply, which is about six months. So you could see how 12 to 16 months can easily be met. And last but not least, that I really, really want to emphasize, is that SNAP recipients who participate, who are eligible, which are elderly, disabled, as well as the homeless, will not get any more SNAP dollars. So, for example, if I'm already getting $500, the use of their SNAP card will decrease, whether they use it at the grocery side of the house, or the hot food, or a restaurant. So we want to make sure that education is really, really out there, because as you know, when you eat out, sometimes it costs a little bit, it costs more than preparing food. And so we want to just make sure that the eligible participants are really cognizant of that. So, for example, they can go to town and go to the restaurants, participating restaurants in the beginning of the month, but then be very vulnerable at the end of the month because they've used their dollars maybe more often than they should at participating restaurants. And balancing that is really, really necessary. So, again, we fully support the bill, but we need to add these considerations when we look at passing the law, or the bill into law. The Restaurant Meals Program is more than just a policy change, it is a crucial step towards ensuring food security for our most vulnerable residents while supporting local businesses and fostering community well-being. By expanding access to prepared meals, we can create a more inclusive, supportive public assistance framework that aligns with our core values of dignity, health, and self-sufficiency. We urge senators to consider Bill 78-38 as a meaningful investment in the well-being of our community. Thank you for your time and attention. I have brought with me the Division of Public Welfare's Chief, as well as our SNAP Administrator, Christine Sanniklas, here, and we are open to discussion and for the further markup of the bill. Thank you very much.
Buenos dias, Madam Chair, Montanani, and Senator Calvo, and all honorable senators of the 38th Legislative of Guam. Thank you so much for having us here. My name is Dina Rendin Pangalinen, and I am the President with the Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the GWCC, we would like to submit this testimony in strong support of Bill number 78-38, the Meals for At-Risk Households Act of 2025. As a business advocacy organization committed to advancing opportunities for women in business on Guam, promoting inclusive economic growth, and building a sustainable, resilient local economy, the Guam Women's Chamber believes this legislation is a timely and forward-thinking policy solution. This bill not only enhances access to food for vulnerable residents, especially those who are unhoused, elderly, and disabled, as mentioned, but also opens the doors for Guam's food service sector, particularly small, local, woman-owned, and family-run restaurants, to play an active role in public health and community well-being while growing their businesses here locally. The Restaurant Meals Program, implemented successfully in other jurisdictions, represents an innovative intersection of social services and economic development. By allowing eligible SNAP recipients to use their benefits at participating restaurants, offering low-cost nutrition meals, this legislation activates underutilized federal dollars already circulating in our community and puts them to use in a way that can generate meaningful economic activity. Participating restaurants, many of which are small and locally owned, will benefit from a new revenue stream while contributing to an essential public good. In doing so, they build brand loyalty, expand their customer base, and position themselves as champions of social responsibility, all values that align with the Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce's commitment to sustainable and inclusive business practices. As a part of implementation, we also urge the Department of Public Health and Social Services to ensure equitable access to the program for small businesses through simple establishment registration process with DPHSS, and also recognize that technical assistance and community education will be very critical, particularly for businesses that are not familiar with the EBT system or the SNAP benefits and eligibility. So the Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce believes this bill is more than a social safety net, it's an economic catalyst. It reflects a commitment to smart policy rooted in compassion, dignity, and opportunity. We want to sincerely thank Senator Shelley Calvo for her leadership on this measure, and we stand by ready to support implementation in ways that uplift our community and strengthen Guam's business ecosystem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now open the floor for questions from my colleagues, beginning with the author of the legislation, Senator Calvo.
Thank you, Sajous Massif, for all your positive remarks and support to this bill. I truly look forward for the support of all my colleagues here. And I really, I have a long list of questions, but what I look forward to is a work session with DPHSS, Public Health, so we can iron out all the kinks and implement, roll out this RMP smoothly. And Director Therese have actually addressed some of my questions with your testimony. I just really want to thank everyone in the panel for an incredible support to this bill. And at this point, I'm going to yield to my colleagues for questions. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Vice Chair, Senator Rada.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the panel for coming down and testifying in favor of this legislation. And I think it's very important to know that, you know, you know, it's these types of legislations that have impacts on families and the ability for someone to have a warm meal. It just reminds me of these past several Sundays where a family was feeding the homeless at the park. And had this been implemented years ago, perhaps they would have been able to have a meal somewhere else. The Kamala carried out doesn't feed on Sundays. So the meal that is provided to those at, by the park area, this family that comes out and provides that meal, that's their only meal for the whole day. So seeing this piece of legislation before us, and hopefully that, you know, Director Ariola just said it does, it's going to take about nine, perhaps maybe 12 months to get it implemented and started. And we better get moving and get this bill passed so that we can get the wheels turning. And hopefully by the next nine to 12 months, we can actually have progress and get people to have that meal that they're looking for. And you know, I know what Mr. Geralano is talking about, where you say EBT accepted here, and probably perhaps maybe when the RMP is rolled out, that is say, RMP accepted here versus EBT, right? And then people know exactly how would they be able to... Go ahead, Ms. Ariola.
Vice Speaker, I think you said it best. You know, when we begin anything new, it really is about educating, education. Carol mentioned that. I think everybody on the panel mentioned it. And yes, it needs to be very clear that there's only certain eligible recipients of SNAP that are going to be able to avail themselves to this. And that really is the most vulnerable of the vulnerable. And so, and I'm reminded by my notes from my staff that even the word elderly, not all elderly are going to be eligible. It's only elderly that cannot cook from themselves. So if I'm an elderly SNAP recipient living in my wonderful children's home, I'm not going to be able to avail them. But look at the numbers I gave you. There's more than enough people, the most vulnerable, the vulnerable, that can take part in this. So yes, education is so, so very important. And so whether it's a different sticker or EBT and a separate sticker that says EBT restaurant, whatever we need to do to make it very clear. Because what we also want is for those restaurants or grocers that participate or opt in, we want them to succeed. We do not want them to be fined or penalized because of some ambiguity on the implementation. So we want people to succeed. We want businesses to succeed. So education is a big, big component.
Definitely. And thank you all for the different professions that you guys represent here, but yet all with a common denominator, and that's for our people. Thank you for all that you do. We truly appreciate you. That's the only question or comments that I have, Madam Chair. Thank you again.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Before we get to Senator Gumitato, I did have some, a question that I wanted to ask. It deals primarily with the capacity of Public Health to roll out this program because, you know, we met just last week, Teresa and Francine and Christine, about my concerns and the concerns of USDA and FNS when it comes to the application timelines and the recertification timelines and whether Public Health is meeting the 30-day federal requirement. And just last week, we had a meeting with Congressman Moylan. And the last rates that were published on the USDA website was for 2023. But the update that we got from Congressman Moylan last week was that Public Health was last, last in terms of rating for the applications and the recertification. So that is really, really concerning. And this is such a worthwhile program, and I stand 110% behind it. So I just want to make sure if this is rolled out, if Public Health is going to be able to implement this.
Thank you, thank you, Senator. Yes, and we appreciate that meeting that we had last week. Yes, because of the concerns with FNS that has been shared with us, that we need to tighten our timeliness, we are definitely doing that. And that in itself can be a whole different conversation. We can share with you all the things that we're doing in scrubbing the data because the data is where the misinterpretation might be, like really what is late. But that is a totally different subject. But I want to reassure the Health Committee that we take the concerns of FNS and our standing on timeliness for every applicant very seriously. And we are not, we are working with FNS on a weekly, if not daily, basis. And so they know the progress we're making. They acknowledge the progress we're making. And I think you're going to see some incredible changes in the very near future. With regards to capacity to roll this program out, I emphasize the fact that currently we don't have staff that could be dedicated strictly for this program. And that's why I emphasize that FNS was very clear to us when we had our informational meeting that I called for, that we will not be getting any more dollars, administrative dollars, to stand this up. This would be like every other jurisdiction, the nine that has, is local commitment and input and local dollars. And so we're going to have to sit down with the good senator and determine just how many education, how many educators do we need out there? How many restaurant, you know, to go out and recruit restaurants so it's equitable? Large to small, mom and pops, everybody. We don't want to, we want to make sure that everybody who has a business license that feeds and is able to if they want to. So we got to get that education out to every business owner that has a business license on Guam that can provide meals. And then the nutritional value. Not, it's not one of these, you know, Carol, I giggled a little bit when Carol first spoke because yes, there is a very, very big misunderstanding that we need to curb right now. And that is not everybody can take their SNAP card and go to a restaurant and pay like a credit card for the entire table. No. It's a very, very specific, very, very, very specific program. The eligible applicant or recipient of SNAP and their spouse that don't have the ability to cook. So two elderly that maybe have some maybe disability, definitely homeless, they don't have a home, a kitchen, and disability, people with disability as well because they might have a physical disability that prevents them from cooking every meal. So it really has to be made clear that this is not a credit card, that people can go to any restaurant and charge and pay for their entire family. If they're going to use that credit card and they go to, you know, any restaurant here, restaurant A, that the individual who's elderly and is a qualified recipient for the restaurant program will be able to pay for their meal and their spouse separately with their card while the rest of the family takes care of it, however they, cash or their own credit card. But again, very, very, very specific. One of the first things, because this is such a wonderful program, is I said, we need to get FNS on board. I need to hear what the challenges are because there are many challenges. And some of those challenges are educational challenges with even the restaurant themselves. Restaurant allowing certain charges. It could, and I just want to point out, and I'm sorry because this is so, so important. The plan itself that we need to put together after the legislation is passed has to be approved by FNS. So FNS is really with us every step of the way. So the bill gets passed, the governor signs it, we need to put a plan together. How are we going to ensure misuse, fraud, waste, and abuse doesn't happen? How are we going to reach out to make sure? I'm going to talk about partnerships with the Guam Chamber of Commerce, the Women's Chamber of Commerce. I'm going to have to ensure FNS that we're going to, we're not discriminating any possible participant, whether it's the person enjoying the benefit or the restaurant or grocer who has hot food. So that's really important. It's the approval process and ensuring that we're doing this really tight so that there are not a lot of leaks and misuse as things move forward. So I hope, Senator Sabrina, that has answered your question. I'm very, very cognizant of the approval process. They actually made it very clear to me several times. You can't just go out, Therese, and implement this. You need to give me your plan, and then you need to come back to us. So I heard that loud and clear at least three times. Three times, right, ladies? So I said, okay, we get it. So.
Thank you, Director Ariola. Senator Calvo?
Just to add to what Director Therese was saying earlier about the usage of the EBT card, it's not like they can just go to any restaurants and order across the board with the menu. Participating restaurants should be able to offer discounted nutritional meal. So that also is a concern for decent when it comes to like meals that are not unhealthy meals, right? So that also addresses the concern of the misuse of the card. So it will be discounted, and that would be a part of our discussion process. And like we mentioned earlier, this is already rolled out in place in other places, larger places. So I think being that this is not a pilot, you know, situation, then we can actually take into account how the framework was followed in other places. And just for the record also, I was just with our Mangahaga earlier. The governor fully supports this initiative, and she understands very well that this is imperative for us to roll out, and this affects our community profoundly. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you. I look forward to sit down with you, Director Therese. Yes.
Thank you, Senator Calvo.
Yes, may I add to that?
Oh, go ahead.
May I add to that? And, you know, so I just wanted to say that when we look at holistically the implementation and the delivery of this program, you know, the ability to roll out a program, right? For me, is just kind of one half of the timeline because the other half is, you know, related to the change of paradigm for the entire community, right? And I think Director Ariola, you know, she mentioned partnerships, right? And I feel that that is, it's going to take partnerships really to roll, you know, because the program is so magnificent, right? And it's such a contribution to society that it really is going to take the effort to have a paradigm change, a shift in paradigm in the way that we view vulnerable populations, right? So that there is an equal keel when we look at individuals and say, this is not necessarily a needs-based policy more than it can be a rights-based policy. And I think that if we kind of frame our minds around that, I think it'll be, it makes for a better program so that when we do run into issues, that at least everybody in the community can really understand that. And I just want to make a clarification. I know we talked about the states that have implemented this, but I do want to point out that Michigan in 1990 did stop the RMP program because of, they stopped it for a while, for like 17 years, only because of, you know, the lack of nutritional value and some of the, you know, folks are going to the Jack in the Boxes and then some of the unhealthier places. And so when we think about that, right, we look at it in that perspective also when Senator Calvo was talking about the framework for other places where there were successes, but also to look at the areas where states have stepped back and said, okay, hold on, maybe this is not what we thought it ought to be. Reframe, right? Do a praxis, readjust, and then implement. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Can I also just chime in as well? Oh, it was on. This legislation is really critical and crucial to us being able to move forward in implementing this type of program on Guam. It's like the first step. The other steps that you heard from Director Therese Ariola and from Mr. Geralan, those are things that this legislation also incorporates. It says that they're going to develop policies and rules and regulations. So really what they were talking about is the internal policies, rules, identifying restaurants, identifying the types of foods. That can be adopted through their rules. And it does not need to be a part of the legislation. The legislation is what ops Guam into this program that allows us to take that step forward. That's what it does. Because each jurisdiction, each state has the ability to opt in or opt out. If they want to do it, they'll do it. And then now it's going to be up to their department or whoever runs their SNAP program to develop and promulgate rules and regulations to ensure that they fall within the parameters of whatever FNS needs, whether it's, you know, they need this equipment or they want to identify certain restaurants and certain foods. So this legislation works. It needs to just move forward. The things that were discussed, the issues that were raised, early, you know, between the two, those can be addressed through internal policies and procedures. And that's, you know, it can change. Those policies and procedures can change through time. But the statute itself leaves that, you know, to the department that is, of course, Public Health that runs the, you know, runs this particular program to develop those policies that are in line and in accordance with the Agriculture Act of 2014 that, you know, implements this food, this Restaurant Meals Program. And so, I mean, you know, those things that are being discussed, I know, you know, it's probably making you think, but this needs to happen because this is the critical point for us to be allowed to move forward. And, you know, everything else that was discussed can be put through policies and procedures, really.
Thank you, Senator Gumitato.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things if I could. BBMR provided a fiscal note for this bill stating that should the proposal be approved, there may be the potential for increased economic activity, which in turn would provide additional revenue via the BPT paid by vendors. However, absent pertinent information from DPHSS to include the number of anticipated vendors participating in the RMP in addition to the number of potential RMP eligible SNAP recipients, BBMR is unable to determine the financial impact at this time. One of the great things about this public hearing is it offers great insight into what can be a successful program for which would be, in a sense, the 10th U.S. jurisdiction to have this program. I think, I just wanted to go off a little bit from what I had prepared, but you mentioned earlier about education and what would be the key. Well, next to you, Therese, are five of your first partners in the education process, which I believe is a great first step as in terms of putting the plan together. I know it won't be you. It'll be those two in the back that have to implement this plan or put it together. But one of the great things, as Carol mentioned, we need the first step. And then this statute actually clearly is that very first step. Also, to stick with what Carol mentioned earlier, we'll actually even go backwards a bit. The BBMR talked about in its fiscal note, some of the figures, it was your testimony that has all the figures. And I think that also is an important first step to making this bill move along in this legislative process. But going back to what Carol mentioned is that it is important for what she sees and what obviously Ms. Heitino sees. what obviously, um, Ms. Heitino sees and what, um, Steve sees in, in their roles. And I'm, I think that's key here. Once we can get this thing through, I'm hoping that you'll include them and can't, can't forget the Women's Chamber, but to include them as part of this big process to get this plan put together. Sometimes I think we do plans and there's many times that our folks can agree that at Public Health, they're alone in that. I was thinking of this, maybe two or three people perhaps that could help, but it's always them by themselves. This can't be a journey that's done by themselves. I think you have a good first step with these people here.
Thank you Senator Guma Tautau to, uh, for recognizing that. Um, the, the Division of Public Welfare, uh, BES, the SNAP program is definitely going to take, uh, put feet to this bill and this law that hopefully will be passed, um, and then signed into law as Governor Leon Guerrero is very supportive of it. But, you know, um, my background is marketing, so it's all about the marketing. It's, if it's not successful in the onset, we will get, we will have a lot of hiccups. And so, in the marketing and the education, it's not just the marketing and the education of their SNAP recipients, but also constant partnership meetings and making sure that are we, are we implementing the restaurant program? Restaurant participants, having that continuous dialogue and not just having it in the beginning of the, of, of the program and then never talking to them again. We got to ensure that both the recipients who are participating and the restaurant providers who are providing were still very, very germane to the true intent of FNS's purpose. Or else we are going to see unintentionally some fraud, waste and abuse because people get relaxed. So, you know, one of the things that we're building up at, uh, to answer Senator Salas Montanani's concern is we are really trying to build up our, um, our evaluation and auditing division for the Division of Public Welfare to ensure that these things are really implemented and the fidelity, the program fidelity of every program we do is implemented in the right way, the way the funder expects us to. And so, education is very key because as you know, we can tell somebody, you must be an elderly, but then it's more than just the elderly. It's not all elderly are going to be eligible. It's only elderly and their spouse who live alone. If you're an elderly who are living with wonderful family members that cook meals for you, you're not, you, you wouldn't be part of that eligibility. So, we tend to frame things in buckets, but even in those buckets, we need to dissect it, right? So elderly, elderly who live alone is very, very different from elderly because we all have elderly in our family, but not everybody can qualify. So, education is very, very important. I want to make sure that the, that the economic stimulus that comes out of this, because it will, um, that the restaurants continue for a long time to be in this program. And very similar to, you know, when you look at a menu, I'm already thinking, like very similar to menus where you see the leaf or, you know, um, whether it's vegan or, um, or gluten-free, there might be a little symbol next to that specific menu item that, uh, you know, participants can choose from. So, it's easy, but it's very mainstreamed and we don't isolate them in, in the dining room or anywhere else.
Got it.
Very important to me as well.
Oh, no, exactly. And when you've got two attorneys sitting on this panel, I'm hoping that they're going to help in the assisting of this process in advance, which is a, which is a question towards that, is that in the, it says the USDA requires that restaurants participating in this program, um, they have to have a point-of-sale device that is programmed to accept EBT. So, recognizing that some restaurants, including those with menu items that are more on the affordable end, if you will, generally speaking, may not have a POS device as a way to help keep items accessible to their customers. Is there an example that we could look to in any of the nine participating states where POS-related costs can be shared among participating RMP vendors? Anyone want to take a crack at that?
Here's a suggestion. Perhaps the chamber can help.
She's sitting right next to you.
I know. That's why I said it. So, you know, there are going to be small mom and pops, right? That probably don't have the device. It's easier for like grocers who have, as you go up, you see, you see the terminal, the little point-of-sale for SNAP and you see the one that's non-SNP, right? But restaurants are going to have to have both. So, I think the question is, is that going to be a burden for some of these maybe smaller? Uh, and it, it is because it's something new and something new always comes.
So, speaking of new, let's get this thing passed. We can go into that.
But there's partnerships in the, on the table here. There's ways to, to share that burden to stand up this program.
Yes, and, and, and with that, with that said, Therese, I just want to add one last thing, uh, and Madam Chair. For the record, what limitations, if any, does the RMP impose on nonprofit organization, food trucks and hot dog-like stand-up operations, food vendors located in military installations to possibly include what would be a naval hospital?
Okay. Perhaps one of the things I should have added as well is food trucks currently are not qualified for this program. That was made loud and clear to me from FNS.
But I thought it's also loud and clear that this is also a state program. So, why, why couldn't we look at opportunities? No, I know you're shaking your heads back there, but we're, I'm looking for opportunities because not everybody can go right to, uh, these places. So, we're just trying to find ways if we can either generate maybe BPT revenue, looking at ways to get food to people. I think that was the key to the program. And so, I know, I'm not closing the door to, I'm just, I'm just saying.
One of the, one of the possibilities and we need to work through it is, you know, you have these Go Grab, um, applications, you know, apps. You know, I would love to have an elderly learn how to order hot meals from registered restaurants and have it delivered to them because one, they're elderly, they probably don't have a ride, many things, right? But we need to work through that process. You know, there's a, well, there's a way we can figure out, yes, it's a cost, but can we figure out who's going to pay for that cost? Maybe somebody in my friends here in my panel can figure out how do we offset those costs? We can figure things out.
All right. Well, thank you so much. And that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you very much and, uh, yeah, thank you.
Thank you Senator Guma Tautau, Senator Turlahe.
Sis, this is Masi, Madam Chair, and to all of you testifying, thank you for your testimony. And, um, I'm glad you clarified, Director, because when you first said that this program will be entirely on local government funding, I was like, what do you mean? So, you mean the, to set it up, right? We're talking about to set it up, but otherwise we're going, they're going to be able to use their existing SNAP benefits or whatever they're eligible for.
Yes.
All right. And, and has that become a concern in any of the jurisdictions? I'm particularly interested in Guam Homeless Coalition. If you have any, uh, data from other places or whether that has become a concern where the director said that at the end of the month, they might become more vulnerable?
Um, I don't have data specifically from other jurisdictions about the RMP program, but I think that we also understand that with regular SNAP benefits, that that can also still be a concern.
We're seeing that right now, very much so. That's why I, I was thinking, uh, I don't know, and maybe I'm not going to guess then. Public Health has not implemented this before. Have they considered it and ruled it out for any reason?
Not to my knowledge. I'm, I don't think it was, unless the ladies know some history. You want to come up? I, I'm not aware. Um, you know, again, if there is any reason that they didn't consider it, it's probably because it would cost more, the resources are not there, it's had to be locally funded. But other than that, I'm not sure. What else?
So. Hi, my name is Francine Salas. I am the Chief Human Services Administrator with the Division of Public Welfare for the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Um, it's, I'm new to the division, uh, but at the same token, it was my understanding that there is a plan, there was a plan in place to implement. And I, I would think that there, there, they were looking at it maybe a year or so ago, maybe a couple of years ago, um, and things took place that were beyond our control like Typhoon Maure and D-SNP and all these, and COVID and all these things that didn't, didn't quite work with what our timeline is. And so, we're shifting back to normalcy, but at the same token, with the 2024 approval for COFA migrants, uh, availing of, um, SNAP benefits, you are also going to see this influx as well. Um, so it, we might, it might be great because we're going to be able to have migrants who were not eligible before, now great-grandparents, grandparents, uh, living on their own, kids are grown and gone, availing of the RMP program, which, which would be amazing. But at the same token, uh, initially when talking with my team about it, they had said, well, comfortably it would take about internally two years to go to fruition. And really, when we spoke to FNS, um, we became, I was like, this, this makes sense now because of FNS is telling us every potential restaurant would have to apply directly with them through paper, through snail mail, like it's, they're like, and, and I don't know where it falls on their priority list as well. So, there would be some other things, I think, um, uh, that would be challenging to get these restaurants on board with FNS. Because just so you know, when it comes to the retail, the grocery store, the mom and pop store, every one of those stores that accept, uh, EBT and SNAP benefits are all approved and applied directly with FNS. We have actually no authority to approve or disapprove any sort of establishment or business, right? So, but what it calls into question if, um, this program were to be implemented is one thing we need to think about is fraud, waste and abuse. And that would add to the workload of our Bureau of Management Support to basically look at these vendors and what their production is. And there may be reporting requirements. Um, I know we're trying to liaise with the state of Arizona to see how these programs are implemented and what kind of barriers they've come across. Um, of course, California is kind of like the gold standard because they have quite a bit of money and they have a CalFresh program. Um, but I'm not exactly sure. I mean, it's, they got a great website and everything, but I don't know what type of, um, barriers or hiccups they face on their end. Um, so it's just one of those things where we have to see some, a particular market that is similar to ours that will work in the same capacity.
Thank you. Do you, um, all right, so we're estimating $400,000 to, um, do the things that are required before putting in this program between a year to two years comfortably or, but, um, it, it sounds like a great program as long as there's not a risk that this pro, entering into this program is going to decrease our flexibility from increasing eligibility for SNAP in general.
No, not at all, Senator.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
It's, it's, it's a program under SNAP.
Yes.
So, it's not one or the other and it won't jeopardize any eligibility enrollment of regular SNAP.
Okay. And then you'll be making rules for the eligibility and how they're going to, everyone will be
defined.
Approved. It says for approved, will process for restaurants, but someone said FNS approves the restaurants directly? Things like that, I guess, how you submit your application, you're going to tell them how to do that. I would recommend, Madam Chair, that this be pursuant to the AAA process. Do you have any objection to that, Director? That the rules be created pursuant to the AAA or are these going to be FNS?
We would have to, we would send everything to FNS and they would approve our ability to get onto the program.
Okay.
None of the approval is on a local level. It's all has to be approved. The plan has to be approved.
This bill's authorizing it and authorizing regulations we adopt it. So, I guess just for all vendors or all restaurants to know the same rules as, as well as applicants. And then those who are eligible, so you're going to determine who's eligible and you've already said it's going to be, um, not just elderly, but elderly who live alone.
Live alone.
Um, and elderly.
And their spouse.
Who do not have a place to store and cook food, is that a requirement?
Yes.
So, this, uh, part B is going to be mandatory. Do not have a place to store and cook food, not able to prepare food or do not have access to a grocery store.
Well, FNS is very clear in their definition. We didn't put the definition, but we don't need to define it. They've defined it very clearly.
You mean each of these, they've defined, perfect.
Senator Turlahe, so they actually have, uh, the criterias and they also define what qualifies as, uh, individuals with disabilities. Normally their person's being paid out of the disability, but they have certain criterias under the, um, FNS guidelines. So, it's 60 and older, uh, individuals with disabilities and then homelessness.
The only reason I'm asking is because B doesn't say shall, it just says the purpose is to expand to these categories as opposed to, these are mandatory eligibility requirements, right? Whereas C it, or the other ones, D, it is mandatory that you have to be one of those categories.
So, so you have to, yeah, so what happens, as she mentioned earlier, is, um, you have, all household members actually have to also qualify.
Right.
To be eligible. So, I think it's federally defined.
It really, really is federally defined and as we work with the author, we will share those infinite definitions.
Well, then, the rules and regulations should be able to be determined easily?
Yeah, exactly. Because it's going to come from FNS directly.
All right. And then, um, okay, I think, um, in, in the FY25 budget, uh, we allocated $500,000 to Public Health for, uh, either the homeless coalition or for shelter, food, medical care for the homeless. Has that been used already?
We are in the well process of using it and we've partnered with Guam Homeless Coalition for most of it.
Is that for food or what?
For various things, even many grants. Um, we have partnered with Karadot, um, I'm sorry, Karadot Kitchen?
Kamelin Karadot.
Carolyn, Kamelin, Kamelin Karadot, the kitchen that feeds our, our homeless population. And, uh, we have used the money to identify the gaps because as you know, Karadot is by volunteer, like families decide on which night. And so, we've come in and said, well, that money will be used for the gaps of those nights that there is no sponsor.
Was any of that money used to purchase any property?
No.
Okay. And, and in, um, I think it was 2023 or maybe before that, we had also allocated $5 million for, to Public Health to distribute to nonprofits for food and commodities for the homeless, for those with disabilities, for other categories as well. However, and then we reallocated to include not just food, but commodities. And I'm just curious, the last time I got an update, they were stuck in how to distribute that out. And I'm, I'm just curious if you know or anyone else at Public Health longer knows whether that was distributed out.
I don't know, but what, $5 million, when?
It was in June 2023 when it was reallocated to include commodities, not just food. But it was, uh, before that, in the budget before that, when it was $5 million for food for the homeless. And that one specifically listed the nonprofits, including the Homeless Coalition, uh, the Catholic Social Services. And their testimony, by the way, is very consistent with what you've been saying about the, um, you know, we can, we can get this food to them, the warm food, uh, the cooked meals, but we really have to concentrate on those who are isolated and are not able to get to those restaurants as well. So, I like your idea. And hopefully our, our bus passes will also play in there and get them where they need to go, uh, is, if you could follow up on that $5 million for me, that'd be great. Thank you. And, um, uh, so I, I support the warm meals. I, I just hope we have maybe some training for them to show them how fast that can go if you're spending it on a restaurant versus buying your groceries or I don't know, you know. Or I don't know, you know, the math of it. But I guess I would just like everyone to be informed. Maybe the Homeless Coalition is going to be helping with that as well. But we have a large population to help. So, si dos masi, for all of you, for your work, and thank you, Madam Chair.
That's correct, Senator. We do have a SNAP education arm wherein we do go out to the public. We do perform outreach, educating different groups of people, communities. At the same token, that just basically means we would add the RMP program, kind of, you know, add it because not everybody is eligible. Everybody thinks they're just going to go to the restaurants now and use their EBT card. But clearly, there's need for outreach and education. And further to, you know, we have no problem. We have a Division of Senior Citizens who have access to seniors who probably would fall into this eligibility category. And they can also assist in doing outreach through senior centers and the daycare centers and shelters.
They said in another state that they needed to hire three employees just for the pilot program. Do you estimate about three employees?
Several educators, several PCs.
And would you need to do that before you do the rules and regs and all the plan? The plan, so you do a plan and rules and regs according to the...
Well, my hope is that the legislation that pass are going to provide some funding. And I would not be able to do it without. If the idea that I'm going to take it out of the current budget, I'm going to have to say then it can't fly. Because currently, our budget is specifically for eligibility enrollment specialties and not a very specific program to stand up like this. This is very unique.
Yeah. But this would have been very helpful after Typhoon Mawar, when nobody could cook. There were very many more probably eligible. Si dos masi, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Turahi. Senator Tadequay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, everyone, for being here to testify. I know it's been quite a long day, so I'll try. A lot of the questions I had were answered, but there is something that I'm, I do have a question with regards to, you know, doing some research on this. Why the other states? I mean, there was only what's seven so far that's participated in this program. Then why didn't the other states participate? And when did this start, the RMP start?
I would have to guess because the states would have to invest some investment. And so that would be my guess. I don't know specifically.
The administrative challenges, yeah, I can imagine, and the costs associated. Speaking of the costs, it's saying here that it could potentially be $400,000 is what you mentioned. But is that meaning the $400,000, is that including the increased staffing and administrative support that you have in section? So $400,000 alone is what you're going to need to start with. And then, then that's number one. Then number three, you said administrative oversight. So increasing staff and administrative support, that's an additional funding from the $400. So you're looking at a program that could cost close to $1 million?
Probably.
Probably?
Yeah. Senator, we, in the testimony, the, so obviously, the benchmark of how much it would cost administratively does come into question on our end as well. Primarily, we're looking at reprogramming. So if you think about the summer EBT program, which is now a permanent program, just to do programming costs with our vendors that we work with, FIS, the local vendor we work with, it's upwards of $368,000 just for the summer EBT. This is programming costs.
Okay, this is the EMP you're talking about? You're not talking about the Elderly Nutrition Program, right? You're talking about...
I am talking about the students who are eligible for summer SNAP, just to give you a picture. So the same kind of programming would be needed on all vendors involved to implement this program. And it ain't cheap.
No. And so... So it is separate from the $400,000?
Well, the $400,000 is just really the programming. And then in the testimony, we listed sort of monthly servicing fees. And so it doesn't include the staff element as well. So that may be a challenge. But, you know, at the same token, when it comes to getting additional appropriation, everybody, like Vice Speaker had mentioned earlier, it really comes down to who benefits. And this population, they do need it. I mean, they're the most vulnerable. And so sometimes, you know, it is a lot of upfront costs. I'm hoping that once those upfront costs are done after the first year, perhaps it's just maintenance. But I'm just, I don't want to overpromise that because I'm not exactly sure what goes into the tech side of everything.
Okay, thank you so much. Can we go talk about the Elderly Nutrition Program? That's still ongoing, right? Because right now, we have elderly in our community that receives hot meals.
You're talking about the Meals on Wheels, the one meal 365 days. Absolutely, it's still ongoing. It's part of the Division of Senior Citizens profile.
And is that funded through the general fund or is that funded through federal grants, federal programs?
A combination of both. It's in our budget. It's a combination of both, federal dollars as well as local match.
And these Meals on Wheels that provide one meal a day to the, is it the same type of...
About $3,000.
Okay, it's not the same criteria as elderly only, elderly with spouse? Who qualifies for that?
Elder, there is a criteria. I don't have the specifics with me. I didn't bring that with me, but...
But it's a broader band, right? It's a broader reach than what the...
60 and above. And that doesn't necessarily have to be a SNAP recipient.
Right, exactly. So it's a wide range.
Wider than SNAP, correct.
Is there any opportunity to, especially those who are listed on your list here, elderly only, elderly with spouse, just, okay, but you mentioned that they are not...
They're all SNAP recipients? That's the breakdown of the SNAP recipients.
Okay, so these are all SNAP. But the majority of those who are receiving Meals on Wheels are pretty much in the SNAP program, right? Well, not all of them, I'm just saying, but the majority of them. Yeah, but they can be, right?
They could be. I'm sorry, I didn't bring that information with me.
Okay, because that program is a really good program, the Elderly Nutrition Program. And like you said, you don't have to be on the SNAP program in order to receive that. I mean, we have quite a bit of elderly individuals who, you know, they really rely on that, I have to tell you. There's quite a bit out there that rely on. It's a great program. I think this program will enhance it, but it's the cost, you know, in this. The almost, it sounds to me like it's going to be about $1 million in order to get this through. And that's probably why the other states weren't able to get, to move forward on this. I know there's initial cost. What is it going to cost afterwards? And what, well, hopefully, if you look into that $5 million that was given in FY22, you know, if there's any funding left over from that, maybe we can find the money or allow a bill that will allow you to use that funding. Because it was intended, you know, that $5 million was intended to help those who are in need, you know, most vulnerable who are in need. So maybe we can find the money there. Because we all know that a lot of the federal funds are being frozen. A lot of other areas are expected of this body to use a general fund to subsidize, you know, federal programs that are no longer in existence, both in the judicial side as well as, you know, public health as well. And who will be the FNS? Okay, they will be overseeing public health, right, and this program on...
It's their program. So they provide all the guidelines and all the definitions.
So has anybody ever, well, if they're going to be overseeing this program, ensure that you cross your Ts and dot your Is and make sure everything is done? Then there's just quite a bit of red tape that's going to be happening in this. And that's probably why you mentioned that it's going to take a while to implement something like this, you know, just to make sure. Because you will be under the microscope when it comes to this. I mean, it's obviously a great program, you know? I wish we can do this, you know, for everyone here, not just those on SNAP, but those who are really in need, just like we do for the Meals on Wheels. You know, there's a lot of people who rely on that. So I wish we could do Meals on Wheels and do that more than only one time a day and provide the food for these, those most needing. So other than that, I appreciate your information. Look forward to seeing some of the other areas in here that we would have to cross our Ts and dot our Is again, saying that because it is federal funding. And the last thing we want to do is have to pay back any federal government, any funding. So, yes, so thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tadequay, and thank you to the panel for providing your input on this piece of legislation. Senator Calvo, your closing remarks?
Before I deliver my closing remarks, I just wanted to make a comment. I think that in general, all of us here, if we are truly motivated to roll this out, it will happen. We will make it happen, right? And collaboration, open communication, we can probably combat all these challenges that were presented earlier. Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities. I understand that in your testimony, there's a lot of concerns, but I believe that we can address these concerns. And if anything, this bill will help homeless individuals, elderly, and individual with disabilities, meaning your department, your agency should be very supportive of this one because you are actually addressing your demographic. Now, cost, I've heard cost a couple of times, but in reality, $400,000. If we're able to find monies for studies worth a million, a million so, why can't we find money, 400K or so, just to start this, correct? So I'm saying, if we're able to help the university and we were able to find 5.7 million, why can't we find money for this? I think it's possible. And if we put all our heads together, we can roll out fast. And I am a very motivated individual, and I'm going to push for this. So I expect that everyone here in this room and the people out there are also motivated to support this bill, to make sure that this bill passes. Now, just to let you know, that's not even my remarks. Everyone, Madam Chair, esteemed colleagues, as we conclude today's public hearing on Bill Number 7838-COR, the Meals for at-Risk Households Act of 2025, I want to extend my heartfelt gratitude to all of you who took the time to be here and to render your testimonies. Very important. To the agencies, communities, and individuals who shared their insights and feedback. Si dos masi, thank you. Especially for all the positive support. Heartfelt, thank you. Your voices are essential to shaping legislation that truly serves our people. Food insecurity is a pressing issue that affects far too many of our neighbors here on Guam. For the elderly individuals living with disabilities and those experiencing homelessness, the challenges of accessing nutritious meals are compounded by physical limitations, lack of facility, and other barriers. These are not just statistics, they are real people, our family members, friends, and community members who deserve our support and compassion. The Meals for at-Risk Households Act addresses the issue by implementing the Restaurant Meals Program under SNAP. This program not only ensures that vulnerable populations have access to hot, prepared meals, but also restores their dignity by giving them the choice to decide how to use their benefits. It's about more than just food. It's about respect, empowerment, and meeting people where they are. Additionally, this program, an economic boost at a time when our tourism industry is down and at a time that our tourism industry has faced significant challenges. By partnering with local restaurants, we can stimulate economic activity, support small businesses, and create the ripple effect that benefits our entire island. Truth be told, many restaurants, even big ones like King's, are very excited with this bill. We need to support this bill and roll it out. Today's hearing has underscored the importance of community input in the lawmaking process. The diverse perspectives shared here will help us refine and strengthen this bill to ensure it meets the needs of our people. I am excited to take the suggestions we have heard today and work with my colleagues on the Health Committee to improve the bill during the markup session. I am fully committed to getting this bill on the agenda for the May session. Fully committed. And to tell you the truth, Vice Speaker fully supports this bill, and he has asked to be my first co-sponsor earlier. That's why I wrote his name already. I am fully committed, as I have mentioned, but I need everyone's help. Together, we can take a meaningful step toward addressing food insecurity and building a more compassionate and resilient Guam. In closing, I want to emphasize the importance of collaboration and constructive dialogue in good governance. It is through these conversations, through listening, learning, and working together, that we create policies that uplift and empower our community. Thank you. Si dos masi for being part of this process and for your dedication to making Guam a better place for all. Si dos masi, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Calvo. Thank you to the panel, Mrs. Hinkle Sanchez, Ms. Taitzino, Mr. Hattori, Mr. Jelon, Ms. Sariola, Ms. Solis, and Mrs. Pangolinan. At this time, we're going to take a brief recess, two minutes before we proceed with the public hearing on Bill 94. Welcome back. The Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs is now called back to order. The time is now 4:38 in the afternoon. We will now proceed with public testimony on Bill 94, introduced by myself at the request of the Department of Administration. It is an act to clarify a selection of the Government of Guam Group health insurance contracts. I introduced this bill based on a meeting in February during which DOA stressed the urgency for statutory and regulatory changes that are necessary to reflect the transition to the self-funded group health insurance program using a third-party administrator. Furthermore, the Department of Administration requested that the legislation be introduced urging immediate action by Ilhess Latour in Guam. And we will begin with Mr. Byrne. If you could kind of talk about the bill and why you felt that it was important for the legislature to act on this.
Thank you, Senators. Thank you for inviting us here to talk about this bill, which we requested. It's, to us, a very important bill. Actually, it's the first time in the whole time that I've been at DOA that we've actually requested a bill, which kind of underlines how important we think that this is. I don't want to lose sight of the overall goal. The overall goal is to provide health insurance to GovGuam employees and retirees. We want our employees, and indeed our retirees, to be healthy. We want them to be healthy, obviously, so that they can be at work and do the work that's needed for the people of Guam. But we also want to make sure that we promote healthiness, as we all know. And we're going to provide to your committee a study that was done by our actuaries of the cost drivers for our health insurance contract. It actually is, it provides some very useful insights into what costs, by which I mean what medical costs, are driving the ever-increasing cost of health care. And I think you will find it very helpful. But we obviously want to make sure that we have a healthy workforce in order to move forward and provide the best health care we possibly can for the government of Guam. The purpose of this bill is to modernize, update some of the way we go about securing this health care in whatever form that we do. But in the last few years, we've advocated and run a self-funded policy. Just to give you some example of the size of the problem, the health care costs of the government is like building one and a half Simon Sanchez schools, because it's something just a little over $200 million a year. So it's a significant, it's a significant cost. And we obviously want to make sure that we deal with it in the most efficient way. So this bill does several things. It clears up some of the issues where the existing law is conflicting with respect to a self-funded policy. It asks for, we're asking you to allow us to enter a contract for more than one year. We've asked for three years. We believe that's the sweet spot between having the repetitive one year and going too long, where the risk to the bidders would be significant. So we consulted with some of our providers, and they suggested, and we agreed, that three years was a kind of sweet spot for a contract. In doing this, we want to try and absorb some of the time that we take to begin the negotiations, format the RFP, consult with, you know, and we have a negotiating team, which consists of 11 members. So there's a large number of people involved in this task. Negotiate with the bidders, evaluate the bids, and finally arrive at a recommendation that goes to the governor. It's a very time-consuming effort. And if we could not have to do this every year, but take, obviously, great care to make sure we do it properly. But if we could just do it every, every three years, that would certainly save a lot of time and effort. And also reminding you that what we're doing with the self-insure policy is we're just getting bids on the management fee, because the government is basically paying for the medical costs that are paid for by the TPA, the third-party administrator. Another benefit of running for three years is stability for members. We go through an enrollment period in October, and there's considerable effort involved in that, too. If we're able to offer stability for members and able to tell them that there will be no changes in the way that they receive their health care for three years, we believe that's a big benefit for them, and in particular, for the retirees, who often are required to attend meetings because of the uncertainty that they don't understand the full implications of the enrollment. So both my staff and the staff at the Retirement Fund very often have to field a large number of questions if there are changes in the way the policy is offered. And this will, this bill, if passed, and we hope that it will be, will help that. You asked about the urgency of doing this. The urgency is that we have just issued the RFP for the fiscal year 2026 TPA bid. We would like to be able to amend that as we go through this process to allow us to have three years on the bid, rather than one year at present, so that when we get to the fiscal 2026 full negotiation, we've got a negotiation for a three-year bid. And then that will be able to take us through the next three years if the legislation is passed and we can amend the bill accordingly. There are some other provisions in the bill. One of the provisions is to reduce the number of people that's required for a quorum. It's very often difficult to get a quorum at one of our meetings when the level is so high. I would certainly want to thank those people that volunteer to be on the negotiating team for the time and effort they put in. But it is a significant charge on their time. And very often, we end up, because people have other commitments, we very often end up with not having a quorum. So we have to go into a kind of working session, but then we have to backtrack and validate the actual decisions with a full quorum. Apart from that, in the bill, there's some provisions that also clarify the duties of the DOA Procurement Council, who's with me today, and I will ask him to explain that shortly. Please consider this a kind of tidying up legislation, but also how important we feel it is that we can go into a, you know, a three-year contract is not so unusual. Most of our leases are three years. So a three-year commitment to a TPA fee, we feel, and from what I understand, from talking to our providers generally, they would feel comfortable with bidding for a three-year contract. So we commend this legislation to you. The urgency is simply because we're in the middle of the negotiation now. We want to get all the information to you in time for the budget. Last year, we were about two weeks after the budget because of the length of time of negotiations. But if we can get going now, we will certainly make our best effort to get the whole package to you in time for you to consider for the budget. So thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you for allowing us to put this bill before you and for presenting it to the committee. We appreciate that. We're here to answer questions. But if I may, I would ask the Procurement Council to explain the particular provision that was put in regarding his position.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Senators Buenos and Hafaday, I did, at Director's request, I did make a few changes to Title V, GCA Section 5118, dealing with the Procurement Council. And the changes are relatively minor, but they're also based on what changes have been put forth in 17 GCA Section 16114 for the University of Guam Attorney, who's currently Anthony Camacho. The change would also allow for me to assist DOA in all procurement and civil matters, and also to represent the Chief Procurement Officer for GSA in all civil matters that are provided for that, and would allow Procurement Council to be designated as a Special Assistant Attorney General for that purpose in handling any matter for a DOA, and would also additionally allow the Procurement Council to act as legal advisor during all phases of the solicitation or procurement process, to include the health insurance process for this. Thank you.
And Senator, we've also provided some comments in a letter dated April 14 regarding the bill. And we've also provided to you some responses to your letter of April 9 and attempted to respond to the questions there. And I believe you have copies of both these documents.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. We're going to open it up also to further public testimony. Mr. Santos.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairperson, Senators. I will submit written testimony later. I believe we still have 10 days after the close of the hearing. Senator, thank you very much. With respect to this bill, before I even start, for the sake of transparency, the company that I work for, Take Care Insurance, has an active legal case against the two gentlemen sitting to my right. So a couple of months ago, if I'm correct, the OPA ruled in our favor. And of course, the OPA, by its decision, allows, if you want to pursue additional things, so we did. So we've taken this matter to Superior Court, and we'll let the courts decide the future of our case. With respect to the bill, Madam Speaker, I mean, Madam Chairperson, there's one issue I think that we need to raise, and that is, in the FY 2023 audit of GovGuam, the Honorable Speaker, OPA PJ Cruz, pointed out that $38 million was transferred from the general fund into the self-funded program. On behalf of the taxpayers and the people that pay these premiums, please, Senators, ask DOA to explain why they needed $38 million to fund this program. why they needed $38 million to fund this program. It's simple. In the insurance business that we have today, premiums must cover claims. What you're telling us based on this funding issue that's there is that we were short by $38 million. We need more transparency with respect to what we were paying for. So I ask you, please ask the Department of Administration to provide details of what really happened in that current, I'm sorry, that policy year with respect to a fully insured program. So moving forward, Senators, for FY 24, where is the audit that's required of this program? There's an audit requirement. There is no audit today. So how can you proceed if you don't have any transparency about how our programs are doing? If the legislature is ready and willing to provide another $38 million to fund the program if it's short, then tell the taxpayers of Guam that that's the intention. But you're asking today to fund a program for three more years. Based on what? What were the claims cost? What are the expected premiums going to be? The other question I have, Senators, is, in this bill, it also said something about the minimum requirements for a self-insured program. What are those minimum requirements? Two years ago, when we were talking about this, we explained to the Senators, there's no rules and regs developed for a self-insured program. We have rules and regs for a fully insured health care program, but not for a self-insured program. Also, under federal law, self-funded programs are under the control of an ERISA program, which is really handled by the Department of Labor and not the Department of Administration. That needs to be clarified. Because I'm not sure that, if it's federal law, that Mr. Byrne or DOA really has the authority to oversee this program. There needs to be some clarity as to who really is going to be in charge of a self-funded program for the GovGuam employees. I was reading the statement made by the consultant, and I need the question to be asked. Is this consultant going to be the same consultant for the upcoming years? If so, where's the RFP for this particular consultant for this particular self-funded program? I say, I implore the Senators to please ask that question. And if you read under background, Senators, and you note, "GovGuam sets funding rates." That's great. "Call premium equivalents that are intended to cover the claims cost, TPA fees, and a contribution to surplus." Was there a surplus, Senators? I don't think so if you needed to fund $38 million back into a program. So for FY 24, please, even if it's draft, tell us if this program, self-funded program for FY 24, made money. If not, we really need to sit down and start evaluating why we're doing this. On the second part of this, it also states they have customized solutions and recommendations. What are those customized solutions? Never once have I heard Miliman come up with customized solutions for our self-insured program. That needs to be asked. And I'm going to have to wear another hat, Senators, if you don't mind. I also sit on the Commission of Consolidated Utilities. We're going to come and ask to please allow GPA and GWA on behalf of its employees, which roughly number about 800, to be allowed to procure its own health insurance policy. We, as a CCU, can also decide if we want to have a fully insured program or a self-funded insurance program. I think we have the, basically, the expertise between our teams to do that. And we will come to you to ask if that is something that this legislature will entertain. Because in a self-funded program, Senators, that premium that's being paid for is paid for by the ratepayers of GPA and GWA. And I also need to bring up one more point. The beauty about a self-insurance plan is the rates are controlled. We get that part. But what GovGuam did in the past two fiscal years is that, thankfully, they kept the premium amount, I'm sorry, the, the employee rate at a level rate for the past two years. But what they didn't share with you was that that difference, which was a 30% increase in premiums, had to be borne by the employer. That employer, in this case, for GWA and GPA, it's not, you know, the individual employee. It's the ratepayers. We had to pass that on to the ratepayers in some form or fashion. We're asking you today to please allow the autonomous agencies of GPA and GWA to procure its own health insurance program. And it could be a fully insured program. It could be a self-funded program. But give us that ability to look, because the premiums that we're paying are not part of the taxpayer base. It's a ratepayer-based fund. Therefore, we should be able to control the funds that we do. With respect to a multi-year contract, that's fine. The only question I have is that, are we going to keep the premium levels for all three years the same? Because you're asking for the TPA to either consider keeping its rate the same or possibly reducing its TPA fees for subsequent years if you enter a three-year contract. That's not clearly stated in here. We need more definition, more clarity on what exactly the intentions are of GovGuam in this respect with a, to a, to a multi-year contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anna?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Senators, for the opportunity to testify on behalf of this bill. Our testimony has been submitted via email to your, to your office. So I'm just going to paraphrase from that written testimony. And it applies directly to, to this bill. I know my colleague to the right here has raised considerable concerns, but I think that's a larger conversation that we need to have on the program.
I'm sorry, could you state your name for the record?
My apologies, Herman Anna, with the Netcare Life and Health Program. So as, as Mr. Santos has stated, there are a considerable amount of things to consider and review with regard to the health program. I think that's a larger conversation that could take days and weeks to, to filter through, but needs to be had at some point soon. Thank you again for the opportunity. Netcare Life and Health is the offer, or the TPA for the dental program for the last two contract periods. And we support the legislation put forth, 9438. Specifically, we agree with the author's recognition to authorize the government in Guam to have the flexibility to enter into multi-year contract for the TPA services. As TPA, Netcare does offer self-funded plans to several large employer groups on island in a multi-year contract fashion. So there are definitely key benefits to offering this multi-year, multi-year option, including increase administrative and cost efficiencies. It enables long-term planning and service improvements, reduces procurement costs, which I think the Director has already spoken at length about, and eases the burden of issuing an RFP every year and going through the open enrollment process every year. Improves continuity of care for members and providers, helps improve risk management and plan control, better claims and data analysis and utilization trends through the multi-year contract. And of course, it can incentivize more competitive pricing from the TPA bidders. So we believe the bill offers important flexibility for the government to stabilize its health insurance administration. In addition, we need to make sure we have, we adopt guardrails around the contract terms to ensure that there's good observance of performance indicators, good oversight, and the government in Guam can ensure they have a long-term value to its, to its program and its contract. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Byrne or Mr. Botha, if you would like to address any of the concerns that former Senator Francis Santos raised?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for allowing me to speak to it. I think it's important that the full picture be known. Mr. Santos is woefully wrong. The $38 million that he referred to is the cost of claims. Offsetting that are the premiums that were paid, which I will come back to in a minute. So the so-called, what he was so-called saying that the general fund had to contribute $38 million is incorrect and inaccurate. The net amount that was, the, the result, the, the net loss on the, on the undertaking was $14 million. Please review our, our fiscal 23 audit. It's sitting in, the, the result is sitting there quite clearly. It's not a contribution from the general fund because it is a part of the general fund. During the course of the fiscal 23 audit, I spoke to our auditors, and I wanted to show the self-insured fund as a, what, what is called in Gatsby terms, an internal service fund. Unfortunately, the, the audit was rolling along. And as you know, we were under pressure to get the audit out. So we left that result sitting as part of the general fund. But in fiscal 24, I certainly intend to bring it out as an internal service fund. Mr. Santos works for Take Care. Take Care was the entity who were managing that, that particular enterprise for that year, which was pharmacy-only. Take Care was asked, and they told us what should be the premium allocation for the pharmacy-only policy. They told us the number. We use that number. And if that number wasn't big enough, I guess Take Care has to take responsibility for that. He asked about the result for fiscal 24, and we provided that to you. It was actually a surplus of $4 million. And, and we've given that information to you. And if you haven't got it, we certainly have it here, ready to, to offer to you. Government, government insurance plans are not subject to ERISA. I don't know where he got that idea. If, if it were, we would certainly follow that, that particular procedure. But it isn't necessary for government plans. He wants the, the two utilities to go separate. I, I don't know why. Maybe he has some knowledge that I don't. He says he has 800 people. If he does, and if you agree with him, that would, that would be okay by me because there's, you know, there's 26,000 people in, in this plan. But I would also ask you, if that is the case, please take on the CCU retirees. Because it's not fair, like, we, at the moment, we have to, we have to insure the judiciary retirees, but not the judiciary-active employers. So obviously, the employees. So obviously, the rates are biased because we're insuring elderly people who probably require medical services more. And I think my colleague here has some points he wants to make about, about the protests that was going on.
Yes, Madam Chair and Senators. I, I do note that there was a decision that was issued by the OPA. Both DOA and Take Care did appeal that. It's currently before two different judges. Maybe it'll be consolidated in the future. No answers have been filed yet. Nothing is taken forward with that. That even to set a scheduling conference, that'll likely take the next several months. So I, I just would note that without, without that, both parties obviously felt it was necessary to appeal the ruling of the OPA in this matter.
Thank you. Francis?
Thank you. I, I guess just since I'm woefully wrong, Mr. Byrne. So that means the OPA audit is woefully wrong also. Let me just state here, sir, it's a general fund expenditure. And it reads, "General government expenditures, the increase was primarily due to the addition of $38.48 million into the medical self-insurance fund expenditures for GovGuam's self-insured group health plan." So it's okay, it's clearly in an audit, Mr. Byrne. So you just basically said the public auditor was wrong.
I don't really want to trade, trade words.
No, I, I know, we should. I'm just stating for the record, Mr. Byrne, it's in the audit. I didn't produce this audit.
I don't want to trade words with him. I, I, that, what he's quoting is the audit highlights, not, not the audit, but...
So where's the detail, Mr. Byrne?
In the audit.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Let's get back on track and on Bill 94. I did want to follow up on something that was brought up on the premium levels. Will they remain the same for the three years if this bill is enacted into law?
That, that would be difficult to say because that depends on, on the movement in medical costs. Medical costs in the past few years have gone up by well over 15%. It's expected that medical costs will go up by 7% in fiscal 25. It's supposed to level off at 4% roughly for the next two years thereafter. But it would be difficult for me to say that the premiums, and I, I don't believe any insurer would be able to sit anywhere and tell you that medical premiums are not going to go up over the next three years. One, one of the big advantages of a self-insured plan is that we can be flexible. And we have been flexible where, and, and this, this is a, and I, I hesitate to drag Mr. Santos into this again. But during the course of the period when Take Care was the TPA for the pharmacy services, we had many requests, and we continue to have many requests, from patients who want to have brand-name drugs rather than, than generic drugs, which the plan is set up to provide. And indeed, you know, our whole procurement law requires us to use generic drugs where possible. The plan is flexible. And where patients, for whatever reason, have had to use brand-name drugs because they're allergic, sometimes they're allergic to generic drugs, or we have a new drug. Some of these drugs are very expensive. The formulary that is offered by the insurers does not allow these drugs. But we, as a self-insured plan, can say, yes, we will allow these patients to take these drugs. Because in my view, if we save a hospital inpatient visit, we've certainly saved a lot of money. So we, we're allowed to be flexible because of this, which wouldn't be the case were it a fully insured, a fully insured program. And finally, I just want to point out that the, the numbers that Mr. Santos is talking about are indeed under audit by our, by our actuary. And we've had a really hard time getting the information from Take Care. They've been asking and asking, and it's been, it's, for whatever reason, it's not been very forthcoming. And we certainly hope that in the next few days, it will be forthcoming.
We're going to open this up to questioning from my colleagues. Senator Gumata?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just let me start by saying thank you, guys, for allowing us to get into your beef today. And let me start by saying, I'm just going to be very frank, Mr. Byrne, we could have taken this in January. Could, is this, or not the case? I mean, you're coming to the committee now. I mean, you're, you're coming to the committee now, but could we have done this earlier, do you think? This, uh, piece of legislation?
Well, we submitted it at the beginning of the year.
Okay. So that's, I just want to make sure it was, it was good on that. Let me just jump in. The fiscal note on this bill stating that in fiscal year 24 and fiscal year 25, as the government of Guam transitioned to a self-funded group health insurance program for government of Guam employees, retirees and foster children, administered by a third party administrator. However, absent additional comment from the Department of Administration, BBMR is unable to ascertain the bill's impact upon the finances of the government of Guam. I just wanted to make sure that I put that on the record today from your colleagues at BBMR. And let me just go into a couple of different things. And actually, I'll just go ahead and ask it and make it easier for us and a little bit more efficient with time. This was supposed to bring savings. And so let me ask for the record, what information is available regarding savings that we as a government realized after transitioning to a self-insurance model starting in fiscal year 2024 through the first two quarters of fiscal year 2025?
To evaluate the savings, we would have to get both a quotation under a fully insured plan and under a self-insured plan. We did do that the first year for fiscal 24 and the savings were between 10 and 15 million in the year.
Thank you. Let me ask you, um, for the record, during which fiscal years did government of Guam employees and retirees, actually, let me go backwards a bit. When the governor enacted Bill 25, 255-36, this is public law 35-92, on June 26, 2020, that allowed choice for subscribers that participate in the government of Guam health insurance contract. In her letter to the legislature at the time, the governor commented that while some government employees may voluntarily pay more for the right to choose, we must also acknowledge that the cost to the government may increase. So again, for the record, during which fiscal years did government of Guam employees and retirees have the option to pay more for the right to select their preferred health insurance plan? And what impact did this policy have upon government finances during those fiscal years?
It was fiscal 23 because the medical part of the plan in fiscal 23 was fully insured. And, um, the employees and retirees had a choice of Take Care and Select Care. Some employees chose to pay more in order to be insured by Select Care. That was their choice. The, the government only paid the same premium. It was, the, the excess was entirely up to the employee. However, um, the, uh, the, the, the part of the premiums that was paid by the government, uh, was obviously priced by both carriers not knowing how many, um, of the employees they were actually going to insure. And indeed, there was a big price differential for the employees because, um, uh, the, one of the carriers was concerned that they were going to get the sicker group. So that was one of the reasons for the, for the big price differential. And although it would be hard to say that actually the government bore, uh, an additional cost, had we gone into a similar arrangement in the following year, that probably would have been the case.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. I only have one, um, one more question, Madam Chair. During a recent discussion regarding the Guam Community Colleges fiscal year 2026 budget requirements, it was brought to my attention that while the colleges consistently lived within its means and avoided the need to request for supplemental funding from the Guam Legislature, this reality may change primarily due to increased costs, or excuse me, primarily due to increased costs associated with higher government contribution rates for retirement and health insurance. So how exactly can the potential decision to continue operating under the self-insurance model in fiscal year 2026 help contain government costs so that more resources are available to help a much broader group of our citizens access healthcare, especially at a time when Gov Guam employees and retirees still face higher annual deductibles? And while a number of employees in the private sector remain under, sorry, uninsured or underinsured?
Uh, you're certainly, it's certainly correct, Senator, that, um, the, these kinds of benefits are expensive. I, I wasn't listening to the GCC budget discussions, but both health insurance premiums and the, the retirement contribution went up for different reasons. Health insurance contribution went up because of, I explained, the, um, it's based upon the expected cost of healthcare. And if I might just point out that a large part of those claims are actually paid to GMH and support the, uh, the operations of GMH, which, um, and because they're made at the commercial rate, not the Medicare rate, they're getting a, a higher, it's, it's a higher support for, uh, for their operations because of the way we, because we're using, you know, the carriers' rates and remunerating GMH for that. But, um, both, both these plans, uh, could possibly, yes, contribute to, um, a, um, an, an increase in, in contributions. In the case of the retirement fund, it was because of a significant loss on investments in, in 2022, I guess it was, which they have to make up because although they were scheduled to start to reduce their premiums as they got over the big curve towards their fully funded position in, in 2024, 2034. Unfortunately, because of the, uh, investment losses, they had to increase their, their premiums too. So it, it, it certainly emphasizes the cost of having employees. But, um, we would certainly do our best to make sure that, uh, medical, medical costs are contained where possible. But as you, as you heard, um, the, uh, you know, we, we certainly have to pay for whatever is available. And, and in the information that we've given you, you asked for some information about the cost of on-island and off-island claims and on-island and off-island, uh, hospital claims. And unfortunately, as you know, uh, both we and Medicare are often faced with having to treat people off-island because of the lack of, of that particular specialty on island.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Byrne. And thank you, Madam Chair, for the time. Appreciate it.
Senator Chirlohi.
Sis, this is Masih, Madam Chair. Thank you all for your testimony. If I could start with Mr. Byrne. So, um, Take Care says that there's supposed to be an audit. And I did also read the statute and I think I sent a letter to you in May of 2024 asking for that audit on the dental. That should have been done for the dental at least. That's on, uh, 4GCA 4302.2H. And it's very detailed what should be included. And I got no response. Is there one on that?
Not, not at the moment, Senator.
Yeah. Why is that, especially for the dental that's been in place for so, for a while?
We, we, um, we took the view, right, that because the numbers were included in the overall audit, that an audit had been done. But I took a further look at the provision that's required for an audit in the legislation. And all these things are in fact included in the overall audit. With the exception of a statement of cash flows, because we don't do that for government because fund statements, uh, actually, um, report the expected flow of funds. And I didn't know what number seven meant. We can certainly do the audit, but of course, that would cost some money, which at the moment, we haven't got budgeted.
So your opinion is that you're not going to do it?
We will, um, you know, we, we will certainly, if you really think it's important.
We're coming in here now and this is the first information that we're receiving, some letter that you sent to the chairperson with your attachment of your, uh, statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance. And then you also attached, um, answers to some questions. Maybe you can explain to us. I thought when you came in, um, last year, telling us the savings that we were going to have from, uh, self-insurance, that you estimated, wrote this down, from my notes, that it would cost us about 120 to 135 million. And that would represent a 5% increase. And that was compared to what potential would have been if we didn't go self-insured, a 15% increase, costing 141 to 155 million potential increase. But you started off today saying we're, we're paying 200 million a year. That's even, uh, higher than what you estimated if we didn't go self-insured. If we went with the traditional way, right?
Yes. Could I just clarify? The, the, I, I was just asked how much the savings, uh, I thought, when I said 10 to 15 million. And those numbers that you just quoted are about 10 to 15 million. That was, that was last year, right? I'm expecting costs to go up. I don't know if it'll get to 200 million. I hope it won't. But there's a possibility that that's going to be the, the case because of increased, you know, GMH puts up their fees, GRMC puts up their fees. As, as you know, there's been a significant increase in pharmaceuticals.
Where is that, where you claim what your savings has been? Where, where is that written? Or here on this statement? 4 million?
Savings would, my understanding...
Where are you getting that?
My understanding of the question that you are asking, Senator, would be the difference between a fully insured, uh, policy and a self-funded policy.
Right. Well, you estimated at least 20 million in savings. Now you're saying 4 million, that's actual savings.
No, uh, no. I was, 10 to 15 million was what, what I said. The 4 million is not the savings. The 4 million is the surplus between the premiums that we've earned and the, the medical costs. It's, it's a different number.
And so the government keeps that? That's, how does that compare to the number set?
If I could jump in real quick here? You're asking about savings. With a fully insured program, I, the insurance carrier, will charge you a fee, a premium. I'll collect that premium for you. I'll pay your medical claims. If I have any leftover from that, I keep it. That's my profit. That's how we make money. On the fully insured program the government of Guam is on now...
The self-insured?
Or, excuse me, self-insured program, you're only paying the claims. So what, it's your actual costs, not what we, the insurance carrier would pay for you. So theoretically, there's a savings already. You're only paying what your costs are, not what the insurance carrier guesses or calculates what your cost would be for that year. The only way you'll be able to equate possibly some type of savings is if, like Mr. Byrne said, you collected a quote on what that year the insurance company would have charged you for that fiscal year and then compare it to what you expended in claims for that, for that same period of time. Other, other than that, it's just a guess on what you're going to save that year. But theoretically, since you're paying exactly what your costs are for your medical claims, there should be savings.
From the previous year under another way?
From, no, the, you're, you're paying only what you use. You're not paying what somebody else told you you're going to be using, the insurance carrier, under a fully insured program.
So if you could, Mr. Byrne, to somebody, what is this 4 million? What is the 4 million?
4 million would just roll over into next year and, uh, potentially reduces the premiums for next year.
You're in the middle of the procurement process right now? You said you've already issued the RFP?
Yes, Senator.
And so the, um, but you intend that we, if this bill is passed, you're going to amend the RFP? When is the answer to the RFP due?
I don't actually remember, but if I may ask Leo, she will know.
The RFP asks us for a multi-year quote already.
Oh, it does?
I believe the intent of the bill is to allow the Department of Administration to actually use that quote. It's in, it's always been in the RFP for several years. You can ask for a quote, but they can't buy it.
We already thought of that and the RFP allows, as, as Mr. Adda says, the RFP allows for that possibility.
Are you allowed to do that? Follow through with a multi-year without this bill passing?
No. We wouldn't do it unless the bill passed.
And is the RFP asking them to predict, uh, claims or simply to give you a, um, cost of the, the third party?
The cost, the cost of the third party expense.
That's different than last year? Is that different? Not the same?
No, it's not different from last year.
So you, how will this bill affect the current procurement? It would allow you to go multi-year or allow you to... I can, I see. You've already issued that RFP. That's, okay. So what, what, how are the actual costs compared to what you predicted for FY '25?
Well, we're only partway through FY '25. So, um, based upon our expectation at the moment and what we know, our costs are roughly in line with, with our expectations for '25. But we're only halfway through the year. And, and we, we, I don't believe we've had any, um, high cost losses this year. We had, um, three high cost losses last year. So the, um, the stop-loss insurance came into play. I did, I haven't heard that we've had a high stop-loss this year.
All right. And, and one of the other things was the rules and regs. And we had asked about that when we talked about this last year as well. Are there any rules and regs in place now?
I think we just, we've been following a, a rule or regulation. The, the, um, rules and regs that are in GAR allow the team to, um, decide how the, how the negotiation will proceed. And that's indeed what we do.
That is what, sorry, what did you say at the end?
That's what we do. We allow, the team determines how the negotiation proceeds. And that, in the, in the GAR, it, it says that DOA sets the agenda. But then when the agenda is set, the team goes forward and decides how the agenda will be carried out. And indeed, they have the ability to amend the agenda during the course of one of the meetings.
But what about the rules? And weren't there also supposed to be rules and regs for administration of the third party or the, uh, the exceptions that you're able to make, that type of thing?
No, I don't think so. I mean, uh, if you have a different recollection, uh, fine. But I don't recall that.
Oh, okay. So on the other parties, uh, first of all, the procurement, you just want to bypass the Attorney General's office? That's what these changes would do?
Senator, if I might respond to that. No, uh, that's, that's not exactly what's put forth there. It allows procurement... forth there. It allows procurement counsel to assist when the AG's office is not available, particularly for the procurement for the health insurance, because it does state only that the, in the health insurance side, that an attorney general would participate in that. If you notice, the language is "or." It says, "Or procurement counsel may assist in that in..."
Yeah, so it seems to me that if you, if the procurement council participates, then that means the attorney general doesn't have to, but it's not his choice, it's somebody else's choice.
No, in, in, in terms of what it was, I think in--
And, and he's mandated to designate the procurement council as a special assistant attorney general?
Right. That was the language for--
In this bill?
That was also put in for E O G as well.
Right. But as Mr. Byrne said, this is the largest contract of the government of Guam, correct? And now we're talking about doing it for multiple years? That's even larger. I don't agree with that part at all. I, I think the more eyes on it, the better. And it has served us well. If we could, and the two, in your letter, what you said verbally, especially Mr. Senator Santos, is very different than what you wrote or what Take Care's testimony is. So pretty much both of your testimony says you support the bill, but both of you came in and said the bill needs to have some protections, and it needs to have guidelines or guardrails, one of you said. And, and then, you know, Mr. Santos, you raised many questions.
Senator, it's quite clear, right? We need a little bit more transparency. And I would beg to ask this question, if there was a surplus of 4 million, can you share that surplus with GPA and GWA? Because we paid the premiums.
Yeah, I am--
I mean, that, 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 and as basic as something is, we, GPA and GWA, have no clue as to what our claims are. Absolutely no clue. We know what our premiums are. And for the record, Mr. Byrne, we pay for our retirees. Okay? So that issue about are we going to take the burden of our retirees? We do. Okay? So make that record clear. If we're going to take the burden on of being a fully insured plan or a self-insured plan, we pay for our retirees. Now, I give that policy call to the legislature, because you're now paying for the court. You make that decision, it's not. But just as a policy thing, we pay for ours. But I, I ask the question, if there's a surplus, then share the surplus with the people that are paying the premiums.
Take care, support the bill.
We support the bill because we needed clarity, Speaker Trelawney, because two years ago, there was no clarity about rules and regs governing a self-insured program. We have a fully insured program. That's what we've been doing for the past 20-some years. But today, there are no rules and regs for a self-insured program. It's a contract, a contract between Gov Guam and its members, govern, I'm sorry, administered by a TPA. And again, for the record, the TPA is, is who decides who the pharmacy is going to be. It's not Gov Guam's pharmacy. Okay? So the formulary that's dictated in any given policy year, that's from the TPA. That's not Gov Guam. So to say that we're not providing this, we're not, that's absolutely wrong. If they wanted to be, you know, doing this on their own, then go procure a PBM. That's entirely on their own. And for the record, senators, and you must research this, there was no RFP issued for a stop-loss insurance coverage. That coverage is totally illegal. Again, go back and look at the record. There was no RFP issued for a stop-loss insurance plan.
Right. Mr. What's it, Adda?
Mr. Adda?
Adda?
Yes.
You said if the bill, or if we adopted guardrails around contract terms, performance indicators, and oversight, we can ensure long-term value. Do you think the bill does that right now?
It's not written to the bill, but the guardrails that we speak of is written into the RFP. And we've read through some of the specifics there with KPIs and other portions of the bill. So we're pretty comfortable with that.
Okay.
We are in support of the bill, and I don't want the guardrail portion to derail that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, so Select Care is not here, but they testified that they want us to clarify that the most economical and beneficial should provide that the lowest-cost option reflects both the net anticipated expected claims cost and the administrative fees charged. But are you doing that? Or you're not going to do that, right?
Yes, yes, we are. And could I just clarify something that I think you said? You know, we're only procuring the TPA. We're not procuring the, the claims. So the three years is only the TPA fee, which is roughly 4 or 5 million. We're not procuring the 200 million, because those are the claims.
All right. So why, why isn't the RFP just deciding on the cost of the TFP versus what you said you're going to go with Select Care's recommendation? Claims cost and anticipated expected claims cost and administrative fees charged?
Yeah, I don't want to say--
Because they might have different--
Can I, can I be clear, careful what I say? Because some of that is the subject of the cases that have been appealed to Superior Court. But the, the, I think what Select Care are saying is that when the TPA is submitting their bid, they need to be, they, they, we're going to ask them, and they need to be clear as to the status of their provider agreements, and how those provider agreements turn into a, an expected claim. Because we're trying to, we're trying to evaluate the overall cost from the answers that we get from the TPA. And that depends upon their provider agreements with the providers, because they may have a provider agreements that say they get, they pay twice the Medicare rate, or they may have a provider agreement that says they, they reimburse three times the Medicare rate, which would obviously be a higher cost.
So you're considering more than the third-party cost in your RFP decision, though?
In the, yes, because we're asking them for that information.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree. I think we need to have further discussions and more transparency. If you could provide the documents that show, I'll look at the audit, but the 4 million, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Trelawney. Senator Taidegui?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make this kind of short. A lot of the questions were asked earlier, but you know, I do have an issue with, you know, keeping the Attorney General out, having that extra, you know, eyes on it, checks and balances, per se, that really you're taking away. And even though your attorney here is saying, no, it doesn't, it does. If you read clearly on, on the procurement council section, you know, it starts off there, provided that the Attorney General shall designate, shall designate a procurement council for the Attorney General Service Agency. So that is automatic. And then you're going further down into the section where it talks about the Attorney General or, or his designee or the procurement council. You know, it's automatic that you'll probably just put the procurement council in, you know? No need for the Attorney General. And there's, there's your, you know, checks and balances that are gone. So my question, Mr. Byrne, would be, if we were to maintain the Attorney General as the main counsel for this and oversee the contracts, would that be a problem?
May I answer it this way, Senator, right? Department of Administration has to do many things, right? Most of the things that it does, it does on behalf of the other agencies that don't have finance, H R, and procurement. The autonomous agencies do all those things, but they do have councils. So it's different to me. The, the issue generally is the availability of attorneys to meet the immediate needs, especially, you know, of D O A. So, so I think, you know, we certainly need expert legal advice because of the tasks that we do at D O A, and that's what we're asking for.
So how has it been working out for you these last, you know, years in 2004, I mean, 2024, 2023, when the Attorney General was involved? I didn't see any delay there.
With respect to this particular procurement, no, they were involved all the way.
Right.
But there are areas where we certainly would welcome more support, actually in the area of H R in particular, because the Attorney General said that he wasn't going to lend legal support for C S C cases. And that does disadvantage us if we don't have legal support at a C S C case. But, you know, I don't actually have too many complaints about the service that we've got. I just think that we, because of the volume of things that we do, it would be easier for us and presumably for him if we were to have our own in-house legal advice.
I'm sure. And it'd be nice for all the agencies to have their own in 24/7, you know, working for the agency. But it's also the checks and balances that are very important and transparency that's needed. So I think that with the attorney, an elected Attorney General, it's supposed to bring that kind of transparency, you know, of fairness, more so than, you know, what the administration may want is, is another thing, you know? It works, doesn't always work out, you know, as, as we had hoped when it comes to providing that type of fairness to contracts. And, you know, I mean, right now, we're sitting here with some concerns about an audit that, that is not out, you know, that provides information that's really needed. And rules and regulations, they talk about, Francis, you were talking about rules and regulations. Where in this bill will it provide rules and regulations that, that you said?
That, that's my point, Senator. There's none. There are no rules and regs for a self-insured government of Guam plan.
Okay.
Period. I mean, don't, don't begin to say they are. Don't confuse a fully insured plan with a self-insured plan. It's not the same.
Okay. And, and I don't see that either. I was looking through the bill, trying to find what you were talking about in, on rules and regulations, whether it was in here or not. I wasn't quite sure, but I didn't see it as, as well.
Well, Senator, the roundabout way of doing it is putting it in the RFP, which I guess they've done. And that's fine. State it in the RFP what you clearly want. Don't change the rules of the game in the middle of an RFP. But what they've basically done here, Senator, is say, hey, we sent an RFP out, can you please fix it with this bill?
Right. Well, my concern too is that you, you put rules and regs in an RFP, you know, RFP changes. And so if you have rules and regs from the get-go into codified, then it's very transparent. And for the next RFP to come about, we can follow that, those rules and regs. Mr. Byrne, I know you're anxious to say something. Go ahead.
We're obviously, Mr. Santos and I are obviously not, not going to agree, but I do look forward to receiving his bid when he, to the RFP that we've just sent out.
Mr. Byrne, it's not the issue of a bid, okay? It's the single largest contract in Gov Guam, other than the procurement contract for oil. Graham can confirm that. All I'm asking, Mr. Byrne, this is not your money. This is the taxpayers' money. Be a little bit more transparent. You could not tell me today, Mr. Byrne, what my premiums, I'm sorry, what the claims are for every single GWA and GPA employee. If you can, provide that data to us, so we can determine if we want to stay in this program. That has never been done in the history of health insurance on Gov Guam. I know, I was there. Unless you ask for the data, you're not going to get it. We've been asking for the data. Tell us what exactly, it's the same for the legislature. Did you make money in FY '23, 2024? If you did, share the surplus. If it was a, the other way, the other did the plan, the MLRs, better than that, what do you do, Mr. Byrne? You return the money. I'm asking you today, return the money. Distribute it. It's 4 million dollars. Divide that amongst the agencies. Can you do that? No, because there are no rules and regs. Simple.
Thank you, Mr. Santos. That being said, Madam Chair, I do plan on reaching out to the Attorney General's office to get a testimony regarding this, this piece of legislation just for the committee, so you can hear from them. But other than that, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Taidegui. I did want to get on the record the questions, responses to the questions that I did send you. Mr. Byrne, if you could go ahead and respond on the record. You responded on April 15th. As we begin the process of reviewing the proposed legislation, can you please provide a detailed explanation of the $38.48 million general fund expenditure that was highlighted in the FY 2023 audit? Please provide your responses to the following questions. Why the transfer of 38 million into the self-insurance fund? Your response?
I think I've already answered that. There wasn't a, a transfer of 38 million.
It was--
It was, there, there was no transfer, because it's part of the general fund. But the difference between the claims and the premiums, as advised by the TPA, was 14 million.
Okay, I'll just read it. Well, this was your response. While the total GF expenditure was 38.4 million, this was offset by total revenue premiums collected during the year. The net transferred from the general fund was 14.7 million, as indicated in the FY 2023 financials. The second question I asked was, did claims exceed premiums for this specific policy period? You provided your response with a bunch of tables that, you know, I'm not an insurance expert or health insurance expert, so I would have to, to look at this and review this and probably have some other eyes on this. But if you can explain--
Certainly, I'd be more than happy to respond to questions. It's, you know, the information is here. If we, if you want us to expand on it, we're happy. Could I also point out that claims and premiums are monthly reported to the legislature by the, by the TPA under the existing legislation?
Monthly?
Monthly.
Okay. The third question, what are the total premiums paid for medical and dental plans? And again, this was referred to another table? Do you have a copy of your responses that you could just provide the answer?
Well, the--
Number three.
Talking about number three?
What are the total premiums paid for medical and dental plans?
So the premiums for medical was 105.5 million, for pharmacy, 23.1 million, and for dental, 8.7 million. So the total is 137.2 million.
Okay, question number four, breakdown of premiums, medical and dental, active employees versus retirees?
We attached a, a rate sheet that shows you the premiums paid.
And that's the last page?
Yes.
The last page, okay. Breakdown of claims paid for medical and dental, did I just say, active employees versus retirees?
For medical, it was 65.6 active, 33.9 retiree. For pharmacy, 20.5 active, 17.2 retiree, and dental, 7.7.
Please provide a detailed breakdown of the claims paid for this policy period.
You'd like me to read through the table?
Yes, please.
For fiscal '23, medical claims, PPO active, 45.2, PPO-- For fiscal '23, medical claims, PPO active, 45.2. PPO, and maybe I should explain what PPO is. That's the 1500 deductible plan, right? And I think I heard something about deductibles. We haven't changed the deductibles since I've been at DOA. 45.2 PPO retiree, 22.5. HSA, that's the high deductible plan, active, 18.5. HSA retiree, 3.9. RSP, 7.4. And RSP are those people whose primary insurance is Medicare, and only the secondary insurance is the government plan. Foster, 1.9 million, and dental, 7.7. For pharmacy, PPO active, 17.1. PPO retiree, 9 million. HSA active, 3.4 million. HSA retiree, 1 million. RSP, 7.3 million, because we didn't cover Medicare Part D, which is pharmacy plan. Foster, $900,000, and dental, not applicable for pharmacy.
Number seven, claims paid for hospitals on island and off island.
On-island hospitals, $39.3 million. Off-island hospitals, $22.2 million, for a total of 61.5.
And then claims paid for pharmaceuticals.
We already responded to that one.
Claims paid for off-island care.
For on-island care, in total, $72.8 million. Off-island care, $26.6 million. This is just medical. This doesn't include pharmacy or dental, for a total of $99.5 million.
I wanted to follow up on what Mr. Santos was referring to regarding this stop-loss insurance coverage plan. He mentioned that it's not in the RFP. Is that correct? And if it's not, it could be illegal?
I would have to check because it's a year ago, but I believe it was in the RFP.
Where can, can I get a copy of this RFP? Is it online somewhere or--
Yes, they're both, they're both online, the old one and the new one.
On DOA's website?
Yes.
And this RFP, does it include the rules for self-insured government plan and regulations? Or is that what the RFP is asking for?
Thank you for answering that in a way that I think I can answer it. When we're soliciting for a TPA, we're basically soliciting their plan. So the rules and regulations are basically the rules and regulations of their plan, which is different for each TPA. They're not significantly different, but they're different for each TPA depending upon, as I mentioned, the, their provider agreements, or some providers are excluded from their plan for one reason or other.
Well, thank you, Mr. Byrne. The committee does have a lot of work to do in marking up this bill, but thank you so much for coming in and testifying, Mr. Santos and Mr. Adda, as well as the testimony from Calvo Select Care. Thank you to everybody that showed up for today's public hearing on 56, 78, and again, 94. For those of you who are watching online, you can still submit testimony up until Friday, April 25th. Testimony must be addressed to the Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs and dropped to the Guam Congress Building, or emailed to office.senatorbree@guamlegislature.gov. Once again, thank you for being a part of this important conversation. That concludes today's public hearing. It is now 5:58 PM. We are adjourned.